Soon as I see on the TV that they're ready to start filming.
It's a good-looking tie, by the way.
Thank you.
All right, you're on. Please go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, and members of the public. My name is Bernie Anthony Nishizaki. At this time, I would like to invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. If you can remain standing, is Curtis Smith here? Our police chaplain, please come on forward. And Anthony, thank you for your fine work.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, honored guests, ladies and gentlemen of the community, let us unite our minds in an attitude of prayer. Blessed are you, Lord God, of all creation. We pause now in your holy presence, asking you to invoke the richness of your blessing upon this assembly on behalf of the great city of Santa Ana and the special presentation of tribute to the Nguyen family commemorating the life of Tin Nguyen. For all leaders of the Santa Ana community, we are grateful and thank you for their inspiration, performance, and unselfish service to the city. We pray for them, your continued blessing of providential leadership and divine guidance in their future undertakings on behalf of the city and for the benefit of all Santa Ana citizens. We ask you now to bless the Honorable Mayor and the council body as they conduct the very important business listed on the agenda. Guide their thinking and their actions that they will be positive and successful. May this city council meeting, which was called to order, be conducted expeditiously, with dignity, and adjourned in harmony. We pray in your holy name, eternal God. And all of God's people said, amen.
Thank you very much. You may be seated. I'm first gonna call on staff members, I see them on the front row there, from the Orange County Transportation Authority, and apparently you're gonna talk to us about various projects impacting the city of Santa Ana. Let me, Jim, if I may, we have, even though it's next on the agenda, let me reverse things, 'cause we have a tribute to the life of Tin Nguyen, who was a member of the Santa Ana family, and we have a lot of family members present. So if I may, what I'm gonna do is come forward and ask council members to join us, and then I'll ask the family to do the same, and we're gonna make a special presentation to the Tin family. As the Tin Nguyen family approaches, let me just tell you a little bit about the very, very fine young lady that was a core of this family, and I believe the greater Santa Ana family as well. And I've, I never met her while she was alive, but I can tell you she's an incredible person, just based on what I have seen. I had the opportunity to attend the viewing and meet the family, and also recent funeral services at a mass at Saint Barbara's Catholic Church. And I can tell you that, you know, Teresa Tin was just an incredible human being. She was born in Vietnam. She moved to Santa Ana as a child. She attended Adams Elementary, Carr Intermediate, McFadden Intermediate, Valley High School, while learning English as a second language. She then went to Cal State Fullerton, where in nineteen, in 2010, she earned a bachelor's degree in health science. She became a food inspector for the county of San Bernardino in their public health department. She liked to spend most of her free time with her family. She also has a boyfriend of six years, Hassan Trinh, and I know they were engaged to be married. You know, she loves her family. She was one of fourteen victims who lost their life in, in the San Bernardino massacre, so even though many think of it as San Bernardino, it was not just in San Bernardino. A fine person here from Santa Ana was murdered on that day. And, you know, she, you know, basically took care of her mother and her brother. You know, she bought a home, which she owns here in Santa Ana, and she was the sole provider for the family. So on top of doing everything else, she was sole provider. I can also tell you that it's a very large extended family, and Teresa, from what I can tell, was the super glue of that family. She was friendly to all, a smile every day, a beautiful spirit, an incredible person. I think it was her brother that said, you know, her heart was bigger than the sun. And what I was really touched by was at the, at the funeral service, where family members were speaking, they're asking us to pray for the families of the perpetrators. You know, they, they, they know just how wrong this all is, and, and how through, you know, the good path, we can get on track, and so they're, they're, you know, praying for peace. They're praying for a better world, and, you know, this is in the aftermath of their beautiful, gorgeous, wonderful, incredible sister just being, you know, murdered. And, and I can tell you, I, I know she was a good Catholic. They said so at church. The bishop talked about, you know, how frequently and active she was as a Catholic here in, in Santa Ana. And I think we're just blessed for, for the spirit that she was, and for the fact that there's this big, beautiful, strong, wonderful family all coming together. And, and I'm sure they're all gonna remain together. I would, at this point, like to ask family members that may want to say some words on behalf of Tin to, to please do so, and also if council members wish to say some words, I would like to invite that as well. Who would like to speak?
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of our entire family of Tin Nguyen, thank you very much to Mayor Plito, Mayor Protem Sarmiento, and the rest of the Santa Ana City Council members, City Ambassador Kang Nguyen, also Police Chief Rojas. Thank you for commemorating our beloved Tin with this tribute, and for having our family here in attendance tonight. It means a lot to us that you came to pay your respects and pray with us this past week in our home at Tin's wake and at the funeral service. Tin was proud to grow up in Santa Ana, and it was the only city she called home here in America. Santa Ana was where our family settled, settled here. Several aunts and uncles were our first family members to immigrate to the United States to build a better life for our family. My brother will say some more words about Tin.
Thank you. We also have a program from the Mass, and also a thank you card that I'd like to give the mayor. And also on behalf of our family, especially the cousins, we also want to share a few more words about the life that Tin lived and the impact she certainly made on, on our family and the community as well. So I'll share a few more words with you guys about that. So as everyone know, the past couple of weeks has been extremely difficult for our family as we come to the realization that Tin is no longer with us. But we believe that her spirit lives on. She was definitely a role model for our family, especially all the young cousins. The young ones looked, really looked up to her. We all love her very much. She encouraged us when we're down and reminded us of what's important when we needed some guidance. Somehow, Tin was also always able to make us feel appreciated by just being her honest self. And how, and that smile of hers, you know, we can never forget that. You know, a smile that I don't think any of us will ever fade in our hearts. Like many individuals in this room, she was a government worker, always working for the greater good, prioritizing the needs of others. She was the true definition of selflessness and family. And these are just words that I'm attempting to illustrate the impact that Tin has made to our family, but also within the Santa Ana community that she grew up in. She went to John Adams Elementary, was very active in the community, helping those less fortunate soup kitchen or clothes drive around the holidays. She did it all. Graduated from Valley High School, fell in love with a wonderful man, who also happens to be her high school classmate, San. You know, all the hopes and dreams that they had before them. But unfortunately, like the old saying, you know, the best laid plan often goes astray. She was her mom's, whom we all called Govun. Go in our native language means aunt. She was Govun's best friend, the only person that really understands the hardship they, they went through with Govun raising her as a single mom. She was close and shared many great memories with her brother Jun, and was a type of sister that would've made any brother proud. I personally don't have a sister, but I was close to her, and she was like the sister I never had. Tin was beautiful and wonderful in every way. I wish everyone in this room could, you know, really just somehow feel her warmth. It would really make us all appreciate each other a little more. And that's the only thing that, if you met Tin, that she would want it for anyone. It's just everybody to feel cared for and loved, and that's what she extended to our family. And in some ways, we feel like we cheated her a little bit, because she gave us so much, and for, for her to be taken away early, we never got that chance to really reciprocate all that and show her how much we appreciate her. And it's sad that it's only in times like this where we realize we don't know what we lost. Although this was an unfortunate event, I think it really brought our family, as well as the community here in Santa Ana, closer and made us stronger. And it's still amazing that in her absence, she still continues to inspire us. And we really just want to ask the, the community to pray and keep Tin in our family in your thoughts, as that's what we really need most at this point. Again, thank you for all the support and generosity, the community, certain Mayor Plito, Mayor Protem Sarmiento, the Police Chief Carlos Rojas, especially the jail department for initiating a donation that they so graciously offered us. And just everybody for, you know, including the neighbors, offering kind words, some encouragement, and baking cookies and bringing them over every day. It really means a lot to us and our family. And we feel very fortunate to have this opportunity to thank everyone and feel the love from the community. Thank you very much.
Well, what I want to say, I want to say welcome to your home, and this is Tin's home as well. And, you know, we consider her a daughter of Santa Ana, and, you know, as profound as this, this incident was, as tragic as it was, nationally, globally, what we realize it affected us as a city, as neighbors, as, as a community. And I know when I was, when I had the privilege of being in your home with our chief of police and with his officers from the jail, who took it upon themselves to raise money without being asked, without having any, any of the press or media around, they just wanted to do that because they felt it was the right thing. And when we went over there to deliver those funds together, in their probably darkest moment, in their, in their most deep pain that you could feel, they opened their doors to us and embraced us. And all we could do was mourn together, and I guess that's what we're doing now. And that's part of the healing that we have to take away with us, is that if we mourn and we feel sorrow together, we realize that we will heal stronger. And the strength that I saw in this family, and I didn't have the privilege of knowing Tin, but knowing her mother, her grandmother, who helped raise her, her brother and son, her fiance, and the entire family, I realized that this was a very, very beautiful woman, and we were all blessed to have her in our midst. And so that's what makes this loss even more difficult, because you realize that a person as, as, you know, as, as, as good as Tin was, was taken from us, and it was for a senseless act. And that's what makes it more difficult, because she was a young woman with her entire future ahead of her. And if you read some of the tributes in the, in the pamphlet that was handed out, you know, she was right on the verge of getting married. She was trying on wedding dresses. She was talking about all the things that a young woman should talk about in that point in her life. She graduated from Fullerton. She had realized her dreams. She was, she met the person that she wanted to spend the rest of her life with, and she was the heart and soul of her family. And she was the bond that kept this family together. And if there's one common theme throughout all the tributes that you all said, is that she was the core of your family. And so that makes it even more difficult to, to accept. But one thing that I did read in those tributes was that one of the family members also said, "Let's not have this loss and pain that we're all feeling turn into anger and hate." And that's the beauty of what the family is trying to say, is that we need to use this moment to embrace the good things that Tin embraced, and how she lived her life, and what she would be telling us right now, which is, you know, we have to, if anything, you know, get closer together and forgive and understand and realize that bad things happen to good people, and we all, as a community, need to grieve together and overcome those. So I want to thank, you know, all of my colleagues, because they all pitched in, you know, the city, the city manager, Mark Lawrence, you know, the council members here, and I, did a little something. We sent a wreath to the family. I was there at the, at the wake. And we wanted to have a little symbol from the city. It was a small gesture, but it was a profound, sincere gesture, letting you know that Tin was part of our Santa Ana family. And so we were with you in your pain, and we feel the same loss that you do. And I know her uncle, who's here, who also knows that we just feel that words can't express the loss that we have right now and the pain that we're all feeling, but it is good that we come together as a community and we mourn together. So thank you for accepting our invitation to come and have us and allow us to celebrate her life, because again, I think we are all enriched by that. So I'll turn it over to my colleagues. God bless you, and God bless all of you, and I, I ask the community to, to keep Tin her memory, her legacy, and her family in your prayers.
And I'm going to just, you know, my remarks to the family first and foremost. I want to thank you all for being here and giving us the opportunity to pay tribute to Tin and to pay tribute to all of you. I know that this is not easy, but just to, to have you here, I can feel, one, your pain, but I also could feel the strength that you all have as a family and, and your strength with God, and, and, and how you are willing to share Tin, not only here today, but with the Santa Ana community. So I want to thank you for that. I also just want to let you know that I do have you in my thoughts and my prayers, and that, you know, God has, you know, many of us here, we tend to not talk about, you know, you know, religion, but I think it's very important for us to realize such tragic incidents like this is what brings us closer to God, or to our Savior, whoever you believe in. And Tin believed in God, and your family believes in God, and that you can ask for peace and for forgiveness. Speak loudly about who you are as a family and who Tin was. And so I want to thank you for sharing that with us. It's, it's, and I, I get emotional, because grace and forgiveness, it is, it's not easy. And we endure a lot of pain, in particular when close members of our family pass away at, at such a young age and had such a promising life. But here you are, again, wanting to share this with the Santa Ana family. So I want to thank you all, and I continue to keep you in my prayers and your thoughts. Thank you.
Welcome. Welcome to our chambers. Thank you for being here tonight. The Santa Ana community was deeply saddened to hear that we had lost one of our own, especially knowing that she was such a beautiful young woman, just with the best years of her life ahead of her. And I just want to tell you that my deepest heartfelt condolences go out to you and your family, and I really hope you do find comfort in knowing that, you know, she will always be a part of your life as much as you were once a part of hers. And it's really good to see that the family's together, that every, it's such a big extended family, because that's really what's gonna help heal the pain. And once again, thank you so much for being here with us tonight and allowing us to join in paying tribute to your daughter.
Thank you very much for being here today. Life changes in an instant, in an instant. And it, it's just, it's very, it's been a very difficult time, but it's good to know that she had someone who loved her. She experienced that love all the way until her life on this planet was no longer. I just want to tell people, friends of the family, that many times when we lose someone, at the very beginning, everyone comes together and everyone is very close and supportive of one another. But this family's gonna need your love and your support in the next months to come, in the years to come, because her loss is always going to be felt. And so I encourage everyone to understand and be there for your family here. And I want to thank you for coming out here today, and we'll make sure that Tin's memory is never lost and that her spirit and what she stood for and what she did for this community will always live on. Thank you.
You know, in a moment like this, really, what can you say? We've all lost some loved ones, and in the middle of it, we feel anger. We feel frustration, and we're not sure where to direct it off. And then we look back, and one of the things I heard earlier was, you wanted to keep the prayers of the others in mind. That speaks of the content of your character, the strength of the family that is bigger and beyond, and to have that faith that you are be able to forgive others, even in a time of trial and trebleations. But the strength of the family coming together is really the core. And for the younger generation, who will never be blessed with her interaction, but will be blessed with the family's strength and the same family lessons that will be given unto her as they continue to live on. It's beyond words, and this is just a small tribute of, of our appreciation for being part of the Santa Ana family and what we're able to do. Please consider this as a small token of, of our respect and our appreciation. I too will keep you and your family in our prayers during this holiday season. Thank you for being here. Thank you for that I wanted to share.
If I may, what I'd like to do now is, we have, from the city, these resolutions. And so what I'd like to do is present it to you all. We prepared three, and they're really identical. We typically don't do this, but, you know, Tin touched so many folks. I think you, you know, her presence needs to be in more than one place. And so as I give you this, this is a resolution and tribute where the City Council for the city of Santa extends its deepest sympathy to you on the passing of your loved one, Tin Nguyen, in whose memory the council adjourned it's me on December 15th, 2015, which is today. And it is my privilege to have presented to you this and signed it. It's got the names of all council members at the bottom, and it comes from all the city. But also, you know, it, it's more than what's in this room. It's more than what's on this dais and in these chambers. It's a lot of people that, that want to hug you. It's a lot of people that want to hug her and her spirit and wish her, you know, the best. And it's a lot of folks that, that realize how special she was, because she was truly special. You know, with all the things that Tin was doing and how giving she was, how selfless she was, how much, you know, she left way too early, because she could've lived a hundred years and it would not have been enough for somebody like her. But the years that she had with us, she gave us great examples, and we can, we can cherish those great examples. So if I may, I want to present these three. Does the council want to maybe step forward and let's take a picture with integrated with the family? Or just, Ken, if you want to just click, just click.
Ah!
Now, if I may, I would like to call upon the Orange County Transportation Authority staff. I think Jim Beal is gonna make a presentation, and as he steps forward, I don't know if you're gonna talk about the streetcar in Anaheim, Jim, but we, we had a real battle yesterday morning, and fortunately, I think the, the forces of good prevailed, and, and it's gonna continue to be worked on in Anaheim. But it was a deep, deep meeting with a lot of philosophy and a lot of thought, and, and so I just want to mention that. Please go ahead, Jim.
Good evening, Mayor Plito and council members. It's also OCTA Director Plito to us while we're here. As you heard the mayor mention, my name is Jim Beal. I'm the Executive Director of Capitol Programs for the Orange County Transportation Authority. With me this evening also is Kurt Brockie, the Director of Strategic Planning at OCTA. And what we're gonna talk to you here tonight about is, we're gonna provide you an update on what we see as five exciting transportation enhancements that are gonna be benefiting the city of Santa Ana, ranging from bus service enhancements, freeway improvements, and rail crossing separations. But we'd like to start But we'd like to start out first, invite Kurt Brocky behind me to talk about the bus program.
Thank you, Jim, and, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. I'm Kurt Brocky in OCTA's Planning Division. We have a major initiative underway in 2016 that we call OC Bus 360. It's really a program to improve countywide bus service. The, the goal is to increase ridership and productivity of the bus system. We're looking really at every nook and cranny of the bus system countywide and looking at ways to improve travel time by transit. We know it takes a long time to travel by transit when you're on the bus or waiting for a bus, so we want to improve the frequency of bus service as well as the travel time that people experience while they're on the bus. We have experienced some major ridership declines since 2008. We're down about 30%. Part of that was just due to the recession, but part of it is demographic changes as well as, uh, service cuts that we've had to make over the last few years. So we need to find ways to keep people in the transit system longer and as well as get riders back into the system. So our overall goal is to reposition the bus service to match markets and use our existing resources more efficiently. What's out on the street right now for public review is called the 2016 Bus Service Plan, and we're planning some, uh, kind of major restructuring of the bus system. It's out for comment now, and, uh, before you, uh, on this slide is basically how we're talking to people. We've had four public meetings, uh, and we are working towards a public hearing on January 25th. As it relates to Santa Ana, we're excited to offer some new services as part of that. For example, a new route 560 that would be a new express route on Westminster 17th Street is coming. We hope to implement that in 2016 as well, and there are other improvements that are planned as well. So it's important that people, uh, look at our website, octa.net/2016busplan. They can get more information at that particular site. Again, we will hold a public hearing on January 25th to get more feedback, uh, from residents. And I should just close that, uh, most people, most riders will see an improvement, uh, from the plan or see their service stay the same. About 92% will either see their service stay the same or they'll see an improvement. Without them available for questions if you have them, otherwise, uh, we would just direct people to our website as well as our January 25th, uh, public hearing.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for that, uh, presentation, and I'll go ahead and open it up to the council if there are any questions or comments, or if there's anything additional you'd like to add.
We have more.
Got it.
Thank you, Mayor Protan.
We thought that was short.
It was short. That was just the bus element. We're going to talk about some of the other exciting transportation things. Next one I want to mention is the OC Streetcar Project, uh, which you are all aware of, and OCTA is really excited to develop and build and operate in partnership with the city. Uh, just to report that early project development on the OC Streetcar is progressing. This past July, the Federal Transit Administration assigned a project management oversight consultant to the project, which means the project in their eyes is real. They're spending money on it to provide the federal oversight to meet the requirements of their program. Also in September, OCTA submitted the Federal New Starts Funding Application, seeking a 50% federal funding share of the estimated $289 million cost for the project, and that application is currently under review by the FTA. And OCTA is currently finalizing the application to enter engineering. And what that is, that's the second phase of the New Starts Funding Program for the Streetcar, and we plan to submit that in early 2016 here in the next month or so. So pending final FTA approvals on the Streetcar, the Federal New Starts Funding Grant Agreement is anticipated in, uh, in 2017. That'll be ready just before the project goes to construction. Currently, the Streetcar Design Consultant will be fully onboard shortly. We planned, we're hoping by the end of this month, and we've already tasked them, and they have begun surveying operations along the alignment on Santa Ana Boulevard and Fourth Street. Acquisition activities for the Streetcar Maintenance and Storage Facility have also begun in earnest. Uh, this slide on the screen here shows the updated project map. Uh, we have refined the number and locations of the Streetcar stops to maximize Streetcar operations for the, for the users and reduce potential traffic impacts as the project's designed. I'll also note that the Willowick Stop on the west side is now, we're calling that a planned future stop that will be further defined if or when decisions on Willowick reuse are made. The revisions, uh, result currently in 10 stops each direction on the whole alignment. That's going east and west. In addition, we've reassessed the Santa Ana River Crossing and are proposing a two-track bridge across the Santa Ana River within the OCTA-owned PE Right-Away on the north side of the old steel bridge.
Will that bridge still be staying?
The steel bridge will stay, and it can be repurposed for other uses at a later Doing a lot of outreach on the Streetcar right now. That includes back in September, we participated in Santa Ana's Fiesta Patrias. In October, we participated in Reimagine Garden Grove event, the Santa Ana Downtown Neighborhood Association Meeting, and Santa Ana Chamber of Commerce Board Meetings. We've included Garden Grove Utility Bill inserts distributed to all Garden Grove, Garden Grove residents. In November, a postcard mailer was sent to 15,000 property owners and occupants within a half mile of the Streetcar Alignment. Santa Ana Utility Bill Newsletter was distributed to all Santa Ana residents, both in English and in Spanish. We participate in, in, uh, self-help county conferences here in Orange County that included an OC Streetcar Tour in Santa Ana, a Tri-, excuse me, a Chamber Tri-City Business Expo, Santa Ana's SOMOS event they have, Santa Ana's Chamber of Commerce and Government Affairs Committee Meetings. We're continuing to monitor and update the OC Streetcar Fact Sheet and Website that we have online, including the recent addition of a flyover video of the alignment, if you go online and take a look at that. We are doing outreach in both English, Spanish, and Vietnamese. So coming up next, we'll begin an outreach ascertainment study this month, and once complete, we'll be reestablishing the OC Streetcar Stakeholder Working Group to keep that group updated. We'll also continue to stay involved in important community events and meetings as they arise in the city. Now we'll take a look at a few of the freeway projects that OCTA has going. OCTA, in partnership with Caltrans, is working on environmental clearance for the State Route 55 improvements between I-405 and I-5. I think everybody's real familiar with this well-known congested stretch of freeway that carries approximately 295,000 vehicles per day. The improvements are funded with Measure M Local Sales Tax Freeway Funding. The 55 improvements will add actually a lane of capacity and merging lanes onto the freeway and provide operational improvements to the local street interchanges all throughout the Four build alternatives are being considered in the environmental process. Those include local interchange improvements with merging lanes on the freeway, a fifth general purpose lane in its direction is another one, a combination of an additional general purpose lane and the merging lanes and interchange improvements, and also, uh, another alternative is the addition of a second carpool lane combined with some merging lanes and interchange improvements.
Can you kind of summarize on this, um, on the widening of the 55? What sort of impacts we're looking at, if any, to any of the stakeholders on either side of the corridor?
There are, to add, to add an additional general purpose lane of capacity on the freeway, if it's a general purpose lane or a second carpool lane, it requires additional width on both sides of the freeway. There are right-of-way impacts. We don't anticipate any full acquisitions. We're working closely with the city staff where city frontage roads, uh, front the freeway, on how to make that all fit into the envelope. So we are taking those alternatives out to the public, collecting the comments on those. We're getting early contacts with some of the property owners at this time.
So there are different iterations, I guess, of how that widening would go, whether it's the fifth.
Yes.
Lane. And, and hopefully, as, as we go through this, there'll be a shared burden, right? Because we have the cities of both Santa Ana and Tustin that have property along that freeway, so just to make sure not one city is overburdened over the other, so.
Yes, there's, there are impacts on both sides of the freeways. The businesses are a little bit different. There's larger corporate, uh, industrial-type businesses along the northbound 405, excuse me, northbound 55, and quite a few different parcels that are impacted, um, along the southbound 55. We do not plan on shifting the centerline of the freeway. That would require rebuilding every single bridge in that section pretty drastically, so.
Right, so.
They are shared.
Right, and so I think all of us understand that, you know, that we, we need to address the congestion, we need to address the, the problem. Again, we want to do it in a fair way, and, and in a way that's going to be equitable for both cities, and, um, the impacts are as minimal as possible.
Yes. Let me talk a little bit about what's coming up next and what's going on right now currently in the environmental review. This slide reflects the overall 55 project implementation schedule. We're currently in the environmental review phase of the project. Uh, we are targeting to have the improvements environmentally cleared in mid-2016, so we can start the final design work and construction to begin by mid-2019. So I mentioned the draft environmental document. It has been released for public comment. The public review period continues and comments will be accepted through, uh, we just requested Caltrans to extend the date a little bit, so the new closing date will be January, January 23rd, 2016 at 5:00 PM. We did hold a public meeting in a workshop format at the, on December 10th, at the Boy Scouts of America County Council Offices on Dyer Road in Santa Ana. We've mailed out 8,300 public notices, postcard reminder mailers have been sent out, and we've utilized email alerts, social media, websites, and have also engaged the Orange County Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, Downtown Inc., Santa Ana Business Council, and Neighborhood Association Meetings in the outreach effort during the environmental comment period. Next, I want to talk about the I-5 widening, uh, which we call Orange County's Main Street, sort of. Uh, OCTA, in partnership with Caltrans, is continuing final design work on the I-5 central improvements between State Route 55 and the 5722 interchange. These improvements are also brought to you by your local Measure M Sales Tax Freeway Funding and are intended to reduce congestion on this stretch of I-5. The I-5 Central Project is in the final design phase. It's already environmentally clear, and the scope includes the addition of a second carpool lane and the elimination of the majority of concrete barrier between the carpool lane and the general purpose lanes. We anticipate final design will be completed in 2017, with that construction planned to start in the beginning of 2018. Finally, I want to talk about the 17th Street Grade Separation Project that OCTA is working on. OCTA is conducting the preliminary engineering and environmental work for the 17th Street Grade Separation. There are actually 13 grade separations proposed on the OCTA-owned MetroLink rail lines in Orange County, and eight have initial studies completed. A few of those, including the 17th Street Grade Separation, are being environmentally cleared at this time, so that we have the ability to capture funding opportunities, be it state or federal, as they arise, and we have a project ready to go. This grade separation will improve safety and enhance mobility by separating the vehicle traffic on the streets from trains at the existing at-grade railroad crossings. 17th Street and Lincoln are proposed to be lowered to run beneath the train tracks. Uh, there'd be a new railroad bridge showing in yellow on this map, and retaining walls that will be constructed. Uh, access to properties around the roadway where it goes down below will be reconfigured along with new sidewalks and landscaping. A temporary bypass road will have to be constructed to maintain traffic during construction, so we don't have to close down 17th Street or Lincoln during construction. The detour road alignment currently proposed is based on a very extensive value analysis process and minimizes impacts to developed property, both two, there's two on the north and seven on the south that get impacted, and it also considers properties that are already being impacted by lowering, by the lowering of the street itself. So this proposed design that we're taking forward in the environmental, we feel is the best engineering solution considering the construction staging required to build this, the railroad design and approvals that are needed, the drainage and utility impacts that are created by the project, and private right-of-way impacts that are legally supportable. Uh, we believe the design and impacts are the most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury. A community open house was held on November 4th. We had approximately 25 residents attending that. Another open house will be held in February 2016, and environmental approval is expected in the April to May 2016 timeframe. So the project is currently funded through the environmental approval phase only at this time. Getting the environmental approval will put this project at the forefront to be able to capture grant funding as it arises. Uh, we think this project will make a great candidate for funding the design and right-of-way and construction phases as these opportunities arise. So that concludes our presentation. We're happy to answer any questions you have on the projects.
Thank you for that. Are there any questions by council members? I think no questions, but thank you very much, Jim.
Thank you, Mayor.
Keep up the good work.
You know, just, just a comment.
Go ahead, go ahead.
On your outreach, do you mind adding a couple of things? Uh, if you can make sure that it's going to be done in Spanish and Vietnamese, um, there's, you know, sufficient outreach through their periodicals, and there's many of them, um, but I think it will be helpful, it'll add to a more robust discussion. And Latino health access, uh, the Delhi Community Center and the South Main Merchants are impacted by this because during the expansion of the 55, there's some, uh, turnouts that goes, you know, directly into their areas. So, you know, I'm sure that they'd like to comment and opine, and I think it'll be helpful. And again, what we're, what I see as a benefit, as we were talking about, when the 57 was going to be extended, you know, at one time, there was a concept to extend it through the riverbed, and, you know, that obviously didn't go anywhere. But the idea was when that didn't happen, we were going to use a lot of the streets in Santa Ana as pass-through streets, and speeds were going to increase, and people were going to get from south to north and vice versa, using our, you know, major streets like Bristol and Grand and, and others. Um, you know, I hope that this is going to reduce, um, the need to, you know, use those boulevards as, um, as, as pass-through, uh, streets. A lot of our merchants, especially along Main Street for us that runs north-south, they want to slow traffic down because it really is hurting their business to speed things up. It makes it more dangerous, and we're just seeing a lot more pedestrian fatalities as a result. But to the extent, you can take that back, and I'm sure that the mayor probably mentions this often to you, that we have a very densely populated city, and we are impacted by speed and by, uh, traffic often. So, uh, you know, to the extent we can do that, um, I'm very encouraged by what you all are doing and the support that you've shown, the Streetcar Project here in the city. Um, we just came back from lobbying, um, in Washington, and, you know, FTA was very supportive. Um, they were interested, um, you know, in new starts, and I know when we met with, um, Senators Feinstein and Boxer's office, they had just got through writing letters in support of this project for a new starts candidate, as a new starts candidate. So things are looking really strong because we feel, you know, we're moving families and we're, you know, we're, we're actually getting people, uh, who use public transportation. As you know, the ridership is very strong here in the city. But it also is going to do a second thing, which is really important, which is to improve the economic conditions of the city. You, you look at Portland system, you look at all the other rail systems, any place you put those alignments, it just enhances and improves the conditions of all those neighborhoods it touches. So we feel there's going to be a dual benefit to having a project like this, um, begin in our city. And again, we think that it's just the first leg in a regional system that the Transit Authority is going to be real proud of, and we're just happy that it's going to start here in the city, so. Um, and that's one thing that, you know, we may disagree on many things up here, but that's one thing that we don't disagree on, and that's what we've always told folks in Washington, and that's what always makes them, uh, have comfort in supporting this project, which is, um, we're unified in making sure that, you know, we're, we're supportive. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very briefly, as, you know, I'm, I'm definitely excited about, and I Just very briefly, as, you know, I'm definitely excited about, and I sent a letter in support of the changes of the proposed bus service plan. I think we're moving in the right direction. But I also just wanted to make clear, as, as we move forward, and I see that technology is advancing, and we're going to be utilizing that within, you know, some of our bus service plan, but also first-and-last-mile connections, active transportation. I think it's very important for us to understand, particularly here in San Ana, your most hundred bus stops, most utilized, come from the city of San Ana. And as we continue to work as partners, realizing that first-and-last-mile is extremely vital, we need to make sure that we have the infrastructure and facilities in place to accommodate pedestrians and bicyclists. So, I just hope, not only using technology, making sure that we have a reliable, predictable bus system for our residents, but assuring that many of our residents have to get to that first-last-mile connection, and they're utilizing bicycles. And I know the laws, how much, how many bicycles and how much per axle of weight a bus can withstand, you know, there's limits on how many bicycles. So, possibly having some infrastructure of where we could actually store bikes in a very safe manner, so that people can utilize, because not everyone can bring their bike onboard. And in many cases in San Ana, some folks can't take the bus, because there's already three bicycles on the rack. And so, I just want us to be cognizant, in particular here, of San Ana, and how many people are trying to get to that first-last-mile after they take, you know, they leave that bus stop. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, hoping that we continue to work together to figure that out, to assuring that we're able to get people to their destination, one in a safe manner, a predictable manner, and a reliable manner. Thank you.
Thank you for that. One more, Jim. Councilman Roman Reina.
Absolutely. Excited about the project, can't wait for it. I know we've lived in the city forever, and we've always talked about having some, some mass transportation, so excited about this. Looking at your, your community outreach, as we move forward, I would encourage you to reach out to our school district as well. It's the largest in the, one of the largest in the states, and there's a lot of potential riderships there that would be, while due to be informed of what's going on. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that, Jim, and thank you to the team. So, with that, Madam Clerk, we're going to go on with our agenda now, and I'm going to ask the city attorney if there's anything to report out. Well, we didn't have a close call, so there's another report. But she might have something. Can you report that we had no report? That's the report.
Mayor?
There you go. Food was good, and there's still some in there, apparently.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, if.
Yes, 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 please. Councilor Mesqua, I want to call upon you, because I think there's some children here from an elementary school.
And parents.
And parents. Do you want to come forward? We want to, bingun, bingun, we want to acknowledge you, and then the kids need to go home and do homework. So, that, we don't want to stand in the way of homework. It's, uh, it's hard enough to get the kids to do it, and if they want to do it, we don't want to be the reason they didn't do it. So, let me turn it over to Councilwoman Mesqua. Go ahead, Angie.
Yes, if I can have the parents of Kennedy Elementary School, they have a few words to say to the council and.
Buenas noches, señores del concilio. Venimos de la escuela Kennedy como padres voluntarios. Muchas gracias por su apoyo y poner a una persona en el cruce de nuestra escuela, que es muy importante, porque yo como madre que vengo de la Leon hacia la estándar donde se encuentra nuestra escuela, corremos demasiado peligro porque venimos caminando, y gracias al apoyo que hemos tenido en tener a una persona que ahora nos cruza, nos sentemos, nos sentimos más confiados en venir, y esperemos seguir teniendo ese apoyo este año y los que siguen, porque por muchos años no hemos tenido ese apoyo en nuestra escuela. Esperemos que nos sigan apoyando. Gracias.
Just wanted to thank you for providing a crossing guard there at Kennedy. It's good for the, for the safety of our students. Thank you for your continued support. We didn't have that service for many years, and we hope that this support from the city continues.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I just wanted to.
Go ahead.
I wanted to give a shout-out to our, our, our current city manager, who's here sitting in, in place of our permanent city manager. But thank you, Chief, thank you to the city manager's office as well. I see that the principal from Kennedy Elementary is back there. Thank you for your leadership in getting this, this issue before us. And I want to thank my colleague, Councilmember Mesqua, for really bringing this all together. She's a teacher there at that school. I represent the ward. We realize that there's a dangerous condition there, so to the extent that, as we do the studies on that intersection, for findings to justify a permanent crossing guard, we hope that we're not just looking at numbers, we're looking at real lives, and we're looking at real impacts. So, sometimes we can't always justify something based upon quantifiable indicators. Sometimes we realize that, you know, it's, it's so important to this family to come, you know, on the eve of, you know, just the holidays that come, and devote time to let us know how important this has changed their lives. It's, um, it's very significant. So, thank you, council member, for bringing this before us. Thank you to staff for helping us realize this.
Gracias por venir. Raramente tenemos que, gracias por venir, por todo su trabajo que han hecho para traer esto aquí al consejo.
Que les vaya bien. Buenas noches, gracias. So, with that, I'm going to now go on to the next item, and that would be the consent calendar. I have one request to speak. Let's take that first. Rick Niedemeyer, I believe it is, you wish to speak on item 13A. Please go ahead, sir.
Good evening. The reason I've come before you tonight is I, I looked at the agenda for this meeting that was scheduled on November 24th, and it says "special" meeting. I'm not sure how you advertise special meetings, but it concerned the fireworks stands and the ban on fireworks, or as some of the people had wrote in here. There were 84 stands last year in the city of San Ana. They were all run by nonprofit organizations. They generated in, with the, between $700,000 and $800,000 in gross sales, which revenues indicates $50,000 to $70,000 in tax dollars. Good chunk of change. The report from the Orange County Fire Associate Authority reported there were two fires in those four-day periods relative to the, to fireworks. I know that the city council has talked about this in, in, at the last couple of meetings, or the last meeting that I saw on TV, but I think you need to be aware that Little League baseball, Pop Warner football, a lot of the churches, a lot of the soccer organizations depend on these funds that they raise to help support and pay for kids that can't afford to play. We have a slogan in the AYSO that "everyone plays," and we find a way to find that money for them, and this is one of the ways we do it. So, please, before you decide to, as some of the folks put in here, ban fireworks, please let us come before you as a nonprofit. There's 84 of us that had stands last year, and have a chance to convince you why we should, why we should keep these. I read some of the reports on here, and it said that, it was kind of interesting that one of the people said that, um, that they called, they called the police department because the fireworks woke them up, and this is late September. We only sell fireworks in the city of San Ana for a four-day period, so it does, it's not safe and sane fireworks that are causing the problems. I'd be the first to agree, as Sal said, last year it was crazy. The fireworks shows in the neighborhoods were probably as good, or if not better, than the ones at Centennial Park. But that's out of our control as nonprofits. It's completely out of our control. I came to two city council meetings, talked with, not the chief, but somebody under him, and also the fire department. See, and you can go on Craigslist at any time and buy fireworks from anybody in the city of San Ana. Just go in there and pick a, pick a, pick somebody and buy them here in San Ana. Now, the response was, we don't have enough people to cover all that. Well, you're, now you're trying to penalize the nonprofits. I believe if you would, if you have this advertised, your next meeting have it advertised, even with John Kelly from TNT Fireworks, we'll bring 84 people, 84 different people in your groups to talk to you about it. Maybe this is not the forum, maybe we can do it in a session, just talking to you guys about fireworks and fireworks only. I think there's a lot of, a lot of merit to it, and I hope you guys have not made a decision on this already. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick, I may misunderstand this, but I think this is mainly talking about a, something that's been agendaized for a committee meeting, not, not the city council, but please, you know, continue to track, and, and, and we'll go from there. So, with that, is there any item the council members wish to pull? Councilor Martinez?
Yes, Mayor, I actually have nine items to pull. I have, and so what I would like to do, would like to talk about all of them. I do have a no vote on two items, and I would like to pull one and continue the item. So, how would you like to do that, Mr. Mayor?
Let, just tell me which ones, which is the no vote.
Okay, so 28 is a no vote.
So, Madam Clerk, if you can note that.
I do have comment. I do have comment on that.
Okay.
And then 20C, I have a no vote.
Okay, what's that?
And then I'll be speaking on comment on 25A, 25B, 25C, 25D, 25E, 25G, and 25I would like to pull to continue that item.
Which one did you miss?
That's it.
I mean, on the agenda.
There's still a lot.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
I actually wanted to pull 15.
I know you could do more. I know, I shouldn't say anything. I shouldn't say anything.
Yes.
Just, just go ahead. What, go ahead and start, and Madam Clerk, you keep track.
So, I'll go ahead and.
Go for the whole enchilada.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll be very brief. So, on 28, look, I'm a no vote. I, I, I still have concerns with this, and this has been brought to the agenda here, and this is about the bus transport at the San Ana Regional Transportation Center. I still have problems with that. We've been in discussion for several months, and so I just want to state for the record that I'm a no vote on that. On 20C, on the parking fund as well, I'm a no vote. I voted no on the city manager's proposal, so I just want to be consistent with that. And on 25A, I am very supportive, and that's again with the emergency, and particularly the two organizations, Illumination Foundation and Mercy Housing, just want the public to know that we are moving forward and, and supporting organizations to help with the homeless issue. And so, I think it's important for us to indicate that we are providing funds to these organizations on that, and so I definitely support 25A. 25B, which is the custodial services for, for parking, I have a question, and this issue was brought up to us, I think it was sometime last year, as it, as it pertains to changing contractors in middle of contract, and I know some of these contracts that are old, but we dealt with this with the police department in regards to a contract where we had a, a, a particular contractor to do services, and then there, they wanted to increase in their fees because of healthcare and cost of living, and at that time, the contractors that we were using were union. This has nothing to do with this contract, but the problem is, is that they were able to get out of this contract, and we had to go with someone else. And so, this is very similar, and so I wanting to make sure, and I'm glad that our executive director is here, yet you didn't do anything wrong, Hidardo. I just want to just. It is a good thing, exactly, but I'm just wanting to state, and I, and I talked to our city attorney about this, that as we move forward and, and renewing contracts, whether they, they be with the current contractors when we do the RFP, or there is a change with the contractor, that we need to make sure that there's not such an easy way out to get, getting out of these contracts, because when we enter into a contract, we're entering into a contract for specific funds, and they shouldn't have a possible way to just, you know, get out of the contract, and then the city has, having to go and look for another contractor. So, I'm just wanting to state that for the record, that we want, I'm just wanting to assure that as we move forward, and I know that the contracts that we do moving forward, that it, it's not going to be as easy as it has been in the past, Ms. City Attorney, that we're going to be able to assure that we have some kind of language in there where they're not able to do so. Thank you, and I just wanted to just state that for the record, so, Hidardo, don't worry, you didn't do anything wrong. Next is 25C, 25D, and 25E. I'll speak to all three of them, and I just want to thank our Public Works Director and his staff for the great work that we're doing. 25C is the update of the circulation element, and us moving forward with that, and, and the San Ana mobility, and also the pavement management is something that we've been working really hard, and, and our Public Works Director's only been here, I want to say eight, nine, one year now? Fifteen months, and we've asked him to do a lot, and so just wanted to thank him that he has this now on the agenda before year-in, and we asked him to do that, and he's been on track with that. And so, I just wanted to thank you, and I wholeheartedly support 25C, 25D, and 25E. 25G also pertains, and that's one of our grants, and bike safety, and again, as well, what we're doing in, in making sure that we're providing not only encouragement and education within our schools and our community, but we're doing it in various languages. And so, I just want to thank our staff for understanding the sensitivity of, of the language barriers that we may have. At times, we tend to just give everything in English, and many of our residents don't understand English, and so we need to provide in Spanish and Vietnamese. So, thank you for providing that. And finally, though, Fred, and as we move forward, we do a lot, we're doing a lot for bicycling, but I'm just wanting to make sure that we don't exclude pedestrians. As you all know, the most fatalities and, and incidents that we have had is more so on the pedestrian side, and so just wanting to encourage our police chief and Public Works to continue to work closely, to receive more grants, so that we can deal with this issue, because it is an epidemic. It is a public health and safety issue here in our community. Every week, someone is being hit, whether it be a child, a young adult, or a senior citizen. That is very problematic. Every person matters here in this community, and most importantly, when they're walking or biking, we need to make sure that we are doing everything we possibly can to provide education and infrastructure, so that they feel safe. So, I just want to thank you all for bringing those items before us. And finally, is 25A, Mr. Mayor, would like for us to continue that item? You know, this is, and I want to do, I do want to thank Fred and his staff for bringing this forward. The solid waste, as you all know, in 2018, that contract is up for renewal. This is a, 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 a big contract that we will be voting on in 2018, approximately $32 million at the end of the day. $40 million now, Fred is telling me. So, this is not something that is, is, is something that should be in the consent calendar, but something that we should really be thinking of, and I know I've had conversations with Fred. I do have some questions as it pertains to the consultant, and just want us to continue it, and just wanted to share with my colleague the magnitude of what we will be approving in a year or so, wanting to make sure that when we go out for RFP, that we have everything that's included, and that we're reviewing the, the old contract, so they coincide with the new things that we want. And so, again, if we can continue that item, Mr. Mayor, it'd be greatly appreciated. I don't think there is a rush, Mr. City Manager.
Mayor and Council, there might be a time sensitivity issue, but I'd like to have Fred come up.
Can we do a two-weeks continuance?
Go ahead, Fred. That's the right answer, Ms. City Manager, by the way. Have staff come up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilwoman Martinez. If it was related to solid waste, I agree with you, we have three years, but this particular one is connected to two major programs that we're running. One is a pavement improvement program that would come to council in January, and also Safe Mobility San Ana, which is pet and bicycle safety. There's a strong connection between this program and those that are coming in. So, we wanted to have some research on ahead of time, so when we come to council and presenting those programs, we have some solid information for the council. So, it would delay all those other programs.
So, I just wanting to make sure, if that is the case, can we hold off on the solid waste, the big contract first? So, and Rick, I have concerns about, you know, them doing the RFP. I have concerns about, you know, who you're recommending as a consultant. I understand those other two programs, and I'm willing to support it, but until we, I want us to hold off on the solid waste until some of these questions are answered. And I have several of the questions that I can send to you all, because it will take me about an hour. As you all know, I do sit on the Orange County sanitation, and I, I sit there, not because I want to, but because I knew that this contract was coming up for renewal, and, and the importance of it. And, you know, it is my final, it's many of us, our final term on here, and we want to make sure that we do it right, and I think we are doing, we're moving forward with an RFP. The last time we did an RFP for the waste was in 1993, so that's been a long time. Many things have changed in the industry, so I'm wanting to make sure that we're able to review this more in detail. I think the city council, we're going to be making a big decision on approving whoever that waste hauler may be, or may be a hybrid, I, we don't know, but wanting to make sure that we have enough information and what we want in the RFP to, to, to be put and brought before us that we're all comfortable with.
Yeah, Councilwoman, there would be plenty of time to provide that information to council. We're so far away from even thinking about the RFP right now. The services of this consultant would provide the information for us to be able to form our thinking, and the data we need in order to come up with any kind of recommendation. So, we're far away from that. Council would have ample opportunities to weigh in on a structure. to weigh in on a structure of RFP, what kind of level of service you want to have in the city. But in order for us to present that to you, we need to help of experts from outside to give us that raw data and compare our services with other cities, uh, in Orange County, and we're able to, uh, give you an intelligent, uh, information, intelligent recommendations. That's all it is.
So again, just to be clear, that, um, you'll move forward with those two other programs, but anything, um, that we're talking about the, um, about the solid waste, we're going to kind of hold off on that, and you'll be bringing all this stuff back?
Can you make a, make a motion to that effect, just on that, and then I'll bring back the balance, so we're clear?
Yes, yes.
I just have to say, I mean, you have an agreement before you this evening that has the entire scope of services, so I can't redraft the agreement on moments' notice. It would have to take, uh, an approval from staff, simply saying that they're not going to engage in that part of the scope of services.
So make that a motion.
If you approve the agreement, you're approving everything.
Well, approve the agreement with that provision.
Can you?
Can?
Can you, can you clarify, Madam City Attorney?
No, I just, I just want to make sure that you understand, if you approve the agreement, you're approving everything.
Right, we can't pick and choose what we're...
Well, I can't redraft the, I can't redraft...
You can't redraft it, but we can direct staff not to move forward on that portion until they come back to the council.
Exactly. We cannot necessarily, uh, issue any RFPs, uh, and we can come to council and discuss that in detail before even issue RFPs. These are just the raw data.
So I'm comfortable, look, I trust you, Fred. You haven't done me wrong in your 15 months, and certainly you have some amazing staff here, so...
Yeah, and you've had chances, by the way.
So, so, and you've had plenty of chances, and so I definitely do trust you.
All right, so is that a motion?
Um, that is a motion, um, and, and again, just to be very clear...
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is, and those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those both, motion carries.
I just wanted to...
Fred, don't break her trust.
Okay, I just wanted to, uh, you had item 28 regarding the Sartec. I just want to, um, let you know that this is, uh, providing lease agreement to Tres Estrellas, is a tenant, bus service tenant, that they comply with all the requirement of DOT, and then we are, uh, we think they are now qualified to be one of our service providers, and that's what it's all about.
Were you a no vote on that, Councilwoman Martinez? All right, but doesn't mean the rest of us are no votes. Go ahead, Mayor, pro temp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, Fred, if you can, um, remain there just for a couple of minutes. I know that there were two, um, service providers, I believe, and, and Madam City Attorney knows, um, of the conversations that were had with both, I believe, the previous service providers, one being Tres Estrellas, the other one being, um, Transportes, I think. So, I, is there any relationship between the two providers? Are they completely independent of one another and autonomous, or what's the, is there any nexus between the two?
We started with three service provider, providers, Greyhound, Tres Estrellas, and, uh, I think Transportes. And two of them were not meeting the, uh, requirement of DOT. Tres Estrellas went ahead and straightened out their, uh, requirement and conditions with DOT, and they're now complying with the requirements of the city and the DOT. So they were, they participated in the bid, uh, process that we had, and they, they were selected as one of the service provided, uh, providers. The California, uh, I think the, what was it, Inter, Inter...
Transportes.
Transport, yeah, tra- California Transporters, they did not participate in our bid program. And, uh, so far, as far as I know, they haven't met the requirement of DOT, so they were excluded, uh, from the process. Now, we have two service providers. One is Greyhound, and now this would be Tres Estrellas.
Got it. So I know that the, the criteria was, when we were going through, I think the, when they were removed as carriers, it was, uh, getting DOT certification, having, um, having the coverage from the carrier, and, um, with the third one, Madam City Attorney, what was the, uh, third element of that?
The drivers.
We, we wanted to make sure that they also had the ability to do interstate transfers because they were crossing the border as well.
So we're good with all three of those elements being met by this carrier tonight?
That is correct.
Okay. And that doesn't mean that the carrier that we had, I guess the conversations with, um, Transportes, they can always come in and solicit, or is this exclusive for this?
Right, because we went through an RFQ process, we went through a request for proposal process, and these two are the ones that responded and who were qualified. My understanding is that the third did not even submit a proposal.
They did not even participate in our bid process.
They, Transportes never even submitted a proposal.
Okay.
And, and so...
Do we know why? Was there, what was, what was their problem, the carrier, the DOT?
I think it's because they don't have their licenses, and they haven't been able to get them, so they wouldn't have qualified.
They didn't have a license, and also wanted to, uh, joint venture with another company that met the requirements, and so it got complicated, I guess.
I remember, I remember. It was, it was kind of confusing there. But, look, to, to the extent that it was, it was confusing, because I thought at one time these two companies somehow had a relationship, so, um, and I know we confused one with the other, and I think, you know, the mayor was talking about one, I was talking about the other. But in any event, as long as this was thoroughly reviewed by, you know, you, Madam City Attorney, and others, um...
We have, at, at any future date, the city could make a decision, if it wanted to, to go out with another RFP, if they find that there is a, a need from the community for even, um, you know, increased services. So it doesn't preclude anything, but this, the approval of this will complete this proposal process.
That's a good point.
All right.
So with that, um, before we move, I have two requests from my left. Let's start with Councilwoman Raina, and then a Mescler, please.
Uh, just real quick question. 25H, it's, uh, the utility boxes that we're putting murals on, and, uh, we had started this as a two-part phase. This is our second, uh, part of the phase. So I guess my question, or my concern, is what happens to the program, the project, next?
I would call Kelly on that one.
Hi, good evening. Um, what happens next? Well, once these, um, boxes are, um, approved by city council to move forward and we complete this project, we would probably have a discussion among the Arts and Culture Commission to see what types of public art, um, they might want to discuss and bring forward to the city council, uh, for consideration.
Now, I know that, that Edison has so many, we have so many. Do you happen to know that count?
I don't happen to know that count.
Yeah, I know, it's, it's, it's a large number. It's a large number. And, and when we first started this activity or this product, project...
About a year ago.
Yeah. A little bit, yeah, about a year ago. Uh, one of my co- one of my, my hopes was that we were be able to dedicate one particular, uh, box to an elementary school that's adjacent to that. So we have 36, 34 elementary schools, so that that would be dedicated for them, so that that might be their fifth grade art project on a yearly basis or something. So I know that we, we started a pilot program, as we get ready for the next phase, I definitely have some recommendations, so I want to be included in, as we move forward.
Excellent, we can definitely look at that.
Would, would that go to the, um, Arts and Culture Commission if we want to make sure that that gets, how, how we make sure, because they're ready that first, right?
Uh, typically, I usually discuss these ideas with that commission, and then bring them forward, either as recommendations to you, or, you know, action items.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. I'll motion.
Okay, you'll, you'll, let's, we have a ton of other motions. Let me, like, just hold it for a moment. Uh, Angie, do you have any requests?
Yeah, I just wanted, uh, 19E, really quick, wanted to take a quick opportunity to thank Chief Anderson for, um, these service enhancements for, from the OCFA. Uh, we are adding, uh, nine, uh, three more units. We're going from nine to 12 units of the paramedics, so this is really going to improve our service, delivery service, so, uh, really proud that we're doing that. Um, and then I have a question on 25C, which is the, um, general plan circulation element update. Uh, on the, here on our staff reports, it says 18 months. Now, that's, is that the total amount of time it's going to take to complete, or is that just the work that's going to be done as far as meetings and, um, I, I've, I've been on the council now for three years, and ever since I was on the council, I've been asking about this circulation element, and, you know, and it keeps getting, I'm like, okay, when is it going to finally happen?
Yes, uh, somewhere around 80% of the circulation element is already completed, and actually was completed a year ago.
Okay.
Uh, when I came over, we wanted to have the Safe Mobility, uh, Master Plan drafted, because that was a, a high priority for council, and we saw a lot of, um, connection between the two. And we wanted to have a cohesive, uh, master plans. That's why I, I requested to stop that process until we get, we finish our engineering analysis, and then merge them. We, we just finished our engineering analysis, and actually today we had a, uh, meeting with IBI, who's a consultant who's doing the, the circulation element with, with planning, and they would be moving forward, uh, with, with the process. So from this point forward, I think it will take, because they need to also include that as, it's part of the, um, general plan, it will take, uh, 12 months to complete.
At least 12 months to complete.
That's right.
Now, now, when it comes to council, are we going to have any, all the meetings have been conducted, or are we still conducting meetings, outreach meetings to, um, residents to give some input?
Good evening, uh, the, the Councilwoman. Yes, we are going, what, what has happened is that, uh, in the past, circulation element was started prior to starting the general plan, and as circulation element has moved forward, we're now revisiting a lot of the land use element. We're introducing, uh, higher density urban development in certain parts of the city. Therefore, we need at some point to stop this until the land use piece comes up and combine them. In the meantime, we are, we have already held three community meetings. We're going to have dozens more, and, uh, of community meetings for the next year and a half, two years, as we go forward. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, let me, Madam Clerk, just bring it back. What I'm going to do, as you, you took all the notes on Councilwoman Martinez, et cetera, um, I'm just going to, you know, take a motion with you noting the, the, the no vote, et cetera, as part of the package, and then the one action that we already took. So that, with that, are you pretty clear if I take, uh, so I'll take, uh, a motion on the balance, and, and really the entire, uh, consent counter, with one exception.
She may be clear, Mr. Mayor, but the rest of us are all...
Are you not clear?
I'm just kidding.
Just, it's just a motion.
I just was going to have you recite it again, so...
It's just, it's just a motion on the consent counter. Is, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those both, motion carries unanimously. So with that, we're now on to the, I believe it's the business, uh, calendar. I'll entertain an item on El Nino Emergency Preparation Plan, item 58.
Do we have a staff presentation?
If we want, yes. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, Steve Reiner, the Emergency Operations Coordinator through the Police Department. A number of staff will be contributing to this item tonight. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to bring this attention to the council, but also to the attention of the public. Uh, to begin with, I'd like to introduce Pete Curran.
Can you move a little closer to the mic, Steve? The, the audio can't hear you.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to introduce Pete Curran. Uh, he's a staff meteorologist with Orange County Fire Authority. OCFA has made him available to us for planning, as well as throughout the El Nino season. He's going to give us an up-to-date picture of the, uh, season that we're anticipating.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council. Uh, I am a meteorologist with the Orange County Fire Authority, and I'm here to talk about El Nino. Uh, El Nino is a periodic warming of the waters in the Equatorial Pacific, and it is here. It is not coming, it is here. Uh, so what El Nino is not, is a particular storm. It is not a particular amount of rainfall. It is a cyclical climate of this warming of the Equatorial Pacific. And, uh, as you can see on the, the first slide, uh, this is a satellite image of the amount of warming above average of the Pacific. And you'll note that, uh, the years 2015 and 1997 are very similar, uh, in appearance, and there's a reason for that. This is, uh, sea surface temperature anomalies, so the amount above normal that, uh, the sea surface temperature is. And, uh, of course, my, uh, talk wouldn't be complete without a obligatory graph, so here it is. Uh, this graph, uh, actually, uh, shows, the top graph shows El Ninos and La Ninas. So the, uh, the, uh, jogs to the, uh, to the north are El Ninos, and the jogs to the south are La Ninas. And what you can see, and I'm not sure if my pointer's going to show up here, um, but the, when, if you look all the way to the right of the slide, you will see our current year, 2015, and in comparison to years 1997, 98, and 82, 83, you are very similar. And the reason for that is, when we look at El Ninos, and we try to gauge the strength of El Ninos, uh, we look back and we compare it on other years that were equally, uh, strong. Anything above two degrees centigrade above normal is a strong El Nino. Uh, currently, uh, the 90-day mean temperature is 2.5 degrees above normal centigrade. Uh, that places us equal to years 1997, 98, and 82, 83. And in fact, if you look at the bottom slide there on the, on the left, you'll see that our actual, um, monthly average is actually peaking us about three degrees centigrade above normal. That would place us in the warmest El Nino on record since records started being kept in the 1950s. Okay? So there, there's a reason that all this is important, and that is that if we look at what happens on those strong El Nino years, uh, we have a, a pattern that is very typical to what's represented here on this slide. And as you can see, uh, it, that, that red arrow represents the jet stream. The jet stream is kind of a river of fast-moving air that moves all the storms from west to east across the nation. And typically during the wintertime, the jet stream pushes most of those storms into the Pacific Northwest, which is actually what's been happening over the last week or so. Uh, in a strong El Nino, and what did occur in 97, 98, and 82, 83, that jet stream migrates south. And we saw a little taste of that over the last 96 hours or so. Uh, but what happens when that, uh, jet stream migrates south is it pushes all the storms into Southern California. And when that happens, California, specifically Southern California, sees very significant impacts from El Nino years. Uh, and these are the types of impacts that we can see during a, a regular El Nino year. This is a satellite image that represents, uh, all of these, uh, low-pressure storms that are kind of stacked up across the Pacific, and this is a very typical of an El Nino year. So, uh, where El Nino is not one particular storm that would come in and rain a particular amount, what you see here is a classic example of one storm after another after another that are stacked up across the Pacific. So what happens to our communities is the first, first storm comes in, it rains two or three inches, uh, there may be minimal impacts. Within a half a day or a day, another storm, and then a day later, another storm, and a day later, another storm. And so by the time we get to that third or fourth storm, the infrastructure is overwhelmed, the catchment basins are already full, uh, and so all of the additional rainfall is now runoff. And when that happens, we can have very significant impacts to the communities when all of that rainfall is now runoff. And, um, when you look at what, uh, the National Weather Service, NOAA, has forecast, this is the official three-month forecast, uh, for the United States, and if you can look at that darker green color, you can very clearly see for the months of December, January, and February, uh, the lower third of California is expecting a, of better than 60% chance of above-normal rainfall. So this is NOAA's way of telling us that they think it's going to rain really hard. Uh, the, on, the center third and the northern third of California are also in above-normal rainfall, uh, range, but not as much as Southern California, and this is very typical. When we look at 97, 98, 82, 83, it was Southern California that took the brunt of the, those storms. Uh, in terms of temperatures, um, it's a very classic El Nino pattern that California and the northern tier of the United States stay warmer than normal, and the deep southern tier stays below normal. And if you know anybody that lives on the East Coast, you'll know that they are basking in 60s and, and may even hit a 70 on Christmas Day. And, uh, I believe it was in the newspaper yesterday that this is the first year in, in history that Albany, New York, has not had snow, uh, for this day. So, uh, El Nino is here, it's not coming, and that's my message. Uh, and I think it's important that the city get, get ready for, for that eventuality. So this is the official forecast. This comes from the National Weather Service. Uh, and, uh, I just want to state that our, our average rainfall for the city of Santa Ana is 13 inches per year. Now, obviously, we haven't had that in many years because of the drought. It's been almost five years since we've had 13 inches. The National Weather Service is stating that they expect us to have approximately 23 inches for this coming winter, El Nino winter, uh, and they forecast approximately 25 storms. Now, if you look, uh, during years 82, 83, uh, we had almost 27 inches, and in 97, 98, we had 31 inches of rain. So that, that 23-inch forecast is very conservative. So, uh, obviously, my message here is that there could be very significant impacts to the city during El Nino years, and, uh, for, uh, a, a in-depth look at the impacts and the preparedness, I'd like to bring back up Steve Reiner to discuss those points, and I'll be available after this presentation for any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. Do you have more? Go ahead.
Uh, yes. Optimistically speaking, we're hoping for routine impacts from rain this winter, but the conditions that Pete mentioned, uh, comparing them to the 97 and 82 years where we had the... the conditions that Pete mentioned, comparing them to the 97 and 82 years where we had these kind of conditions, we did have flooding and other severe impacts during those winters. So we are expecting possibility of flooded streets, neighborhoods, homes. We do have some basement levels in the city here. Obstruction of the drainage channels or storm drains, and the inability to go out and do the maintenance when we have a storm. Afterwards, Public Works will go out and address the storm drains and the flood channels. The successive storms or extended storm systems prevent that maintenance so that we can't clean up and be ready for the next storm. When the infrastructure, the pump stations and so on are under strain, that's when they're most likely to fail. Possibility of flooding near the Santa Ana Riverbed area, roof or structural failure, and slope failure near some of the creeks. The city staff representatives from all the departments have undertaken a planning and risk analysis effort to identify lead planners and staff members from each department, what that department's roles and responsibilities and priorities would be for flooding situations, and the supplies, equipment, staff, outside vendors, and funding that they would need to respond. We're approaching this in a series of phases, initially prevention and mitigation. Those are the steps that we can take now before the rain begins to lessen the impact or lessen the potential for damage. Preparedness is gathering supplies, equipment, identifying the resources that we would need, and response and recovery are the actual procedures that we would implement once it begins raining to address the problems that occur. For mitigation and prevention, a major part of that is community outreach. We're reaching out to staff, residents, businesses, through the schools and neighborhood associations, also to the homeless population to make them aware of the anticipated conditions, working very closely with Orange County Fire Authority, Orange County Public Works, and Flood Control District. The city itself is undertaking storm drain maintenance, flood channel maintenance, to make sure they're in top condition before the rain begins. Tree and green space maintenance to eliminate the debris that could wash into those channels. Inspection and repair of our city properties, and code enforcement effort to abate trash or nuisances on other properties that might wash into the systems. We do, city staff has prepared a flyer in English, Spanish, and Vietnamese. It's out front. It'll be distributed through all of our city channels, websites, social media, explaining to the public what the situation is and actions that they can take. For preparation, for residents specifically, we're making them aware of communication systems, the Twitter accounts. Alert OC is the city's emergency notification system. Radio C is a website that can explain to them how to prepare for emergencies. But we're asking them specifically to clear rain gutters, drains, commercial properties that have flat roofs are at particular danger if, if they don't have adequate drainage and their water collects on the roof. Possibility of property damage or roof collapse. Asking property owners to address anything outdoors that could become debris and clog the drain systems, landscaping materials, construction materials, lawn furniture. Now's the time to obtain sandbags. Those are available at the Public Works yard, at the OCFA fire stations, or at various home supply stores. And evaluate the option for flood insurance, reminding people that homeowner's insurance is not going to protect them from water damage. Preparedness phase, we're identifying the flood areas, the places that generally flood here in the city, preparing road closure and traffic detour measures for those areas, identifying the emergency staff that we would need and what our call-out procedures are, supplies, equipment, contractors, et cetera, and locating and warning the homeless population. There is a number of homeless that do reside in or near the flood control channels that may be at risk. And response and recovery, again, we're identifying the leads from each department that are going to be needed. We can monitor weather, not just through the Weather Service, but through Orange County. There's more communication systems that give us that information. They will also give us information on flood channels, flood stages through Public Works and the Flood Control District. Swift Water Rescue is available through OCFA, the possibility of warning or evacuation of homeless if we do experience flood conditions. We're preparing an incident action plan that identifies our org chart, our chain of command, and the objectives that we would take. And finally, our damage tracking and record keeping, what we have to expend to address this problem. Any questions for myself, for Pete, or for any...
Counselor Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you both for your really eloquent presentations, just right on point. I have been paying close attention, as I sit on various boards and, you know, various municipalities are getting prepared. I'm glad that we're finally here and preparing ourselves. I know many cities have declared states of emergencies and what levels. I know what we're doing here today is really authorizing approval of certain funds for the city manager and also an urgency ordinance to change, you know, the Division III, Article 5 of Chapter 2 regarding emergency services. But my question to you all is that, as we all know that this is coming, at what point do we actually declare a state of emergency and using levels, a level 1, 2, 3? And I'm not sure, yeah, I'm not, I'm not the professional you are. At what point do we start doing that? I know we're right now in the mitigation phase of wanting to identify what we need to do and the preparedness to prepare our residents. But in Santa Ana, we're, we're very different than many cities in, in Orange County in how we're going to get this word out. In particular, it's always best to go out early in trying to, making sure that our residents have the sandbags. So are sandbags available now to our residents? That's, that's my first question. And I already asked you about the levels of state of emergency. At what point do we start that? And then three, this authorizing the city manager up to 250, to me, that's a very low number. I really believe that there's, there, you know, one, as we identify our facilities, and I know recently we just did an emergency to fix, you know, our yard and our roof, are we identifying other areas where there's going to need, where we're going to need more funding? And I ask all these questions because when I look at 250, you know, and it's something, this comes and what, at what levels they start to come, council, we may not be able to do a special council meeting to approve more funding. So my question to you all is, one, is the 250, is that low? Or should we address this and, and, and move it a little higher based on this emergency? And then my last question was on flood insurance. And I know we're asking our residents to look into that, but is the city looking into that? You know, with all our assets? And so that's my question. Have we contacted our insurance company and making sure that the city is protected as it pertains to flood insurance, and what those additional costs are going to take?
For the sandbags, yes, those are available now at the corporate yard and at the OCFA fire stations. And we can also refer homeowners or businesses to Home Depots and Lowe's, et cetera, if they need more. For stages, the incident action plan that I mentioned is going to identify 72 hours out, 24 hours out, the objectives that we want to establish, when it's time to call in staff. And we're going to put together basically a command staff to start making those decisions.
When would those decisions start being made?
Well, again, they begin at 72 hours out, where we would start to increase preparedness.
So is the plan in place already?
I wouldn't say it's finalized yet.
Okay, and when would that be provided to this city council so that we understand as well? You know, we are first responders as elected officials, and we all know that the community tends to go to the elected official first before it goes to city staff. And so it's important for us to understand the stages and understand what information we're going to have to get out to our residents, because they're going to be contacting us on Facebook, calling us on our cell phones, and we need to know. So the sooner we have a plan in, in place, the better for us. And as well, we're first responders, and we need to know our roles as well, not just from a staff perspective, but as elected officials, and what steps we need to take as, as well.
Yes, and I appreciate, one of the biggest objectives the council can serve is to help to get that information out to the residents through contacts, community groups, or individual one-on-one. With the other question, the funding, I think, would be addressed with the next speaker as far as the, the level of funding. And your question on flood insurance, I'm not sure if, is that...
Counselor Martinez, as far as the insurance, that has been taken care of. In terms of the funding, that was, 250,000 was a recommendation from the city manager. I'm sure it's the prerogative of council if you want to...
So just from an expert's perspective, and I'm not sure if you would know that, I, I don't know where we get the 250, but how much was it just to replace the roof at the yard? Could I ask, what was that approval of for us, that emergency? What was the cost?
We worked, we, the city manager appointed a committee of sorts to work on this issue, and he had his staff working on it. I think the reason, maybe the explanation for the $250,000 is if elements emerge that, that require us or that mandate that we adopt some resolution of emergency, you won't have any purchasing limit. The ordinance, the existing rules will just allow the city manager to go out there and do everything he needs to do. So don't worry, under this, under this proposal, he will have the authority to spend money to fix and to protect life, fix items and to protect life and health and safety. What we're doing with this proposal is authorizing up to the $250,000 to do kind of that preventative work, some of the, you know, some of the work that might be necessary, but yet we haven't really reached that level that requires declaration of an emergency. So this kind of plugs that hole, because there's no emergency. We have to go through RFQs, we have to do all the bidding, and then there's an emergency. This was, we can kind of plan that El Nino's going to happen based on what you heard this evening. So this was meant to kind of take care of that no man's land. We think $250,000 may be sufficient, but if it's not, we can come back at a subsequent meeting. That's kind of the, it's not an emergency. But if it is an emergency and you have to spend $2 million, he'll spend $2, $2 million because that's what he'll have to do.
Great, and thank goodness we do have our reserves in place, and that's what they were for. So, you know, we're, you know, in, in a good position. And those are just my questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Are there any other? Councilwoman Nemesqua.
I have a question on the potential impacts here where it says overflow of the Santa Ana River adjacent to the neighborhoods. I did get a call from one of my residents. Who's clearing the debris from the riverbed? Because I believe that's county, correct?
Yes.
The riverbed?
It's, I know the county is addressing it. There are sections.
Thank you. And Councilwoman, yeah, county flood control have jurisdiction over the channels, and we've been contacting them and reminding them about all the channels we have, minor and major channels, that they need to be cleaned up ahead of the storm, and we're working with them very closely right now.
Oh, okay. Okay, I just want to make sure. Now, as far as the Santiago Creek, any potential impacts there? Do we need to remove any debris from our, that's in my ward.
Which creek?
Santiago Creek.
Santiago Creek, also, it's county flood control.
Okay, do you handle it?
Yes, and that's one of the, one of the areas that we, we also emphasizing that needs to be cleaned up. We have a little bit of difficulty getting them down there, but we are, we are working really hard to get them down there. We have an area that is in cities right-of-way, that's walkway.
Right.
And we are taking care of that ourselves. With, with the Orange County Fire Department and other, other agencies, we're, we're trying to clear those pathways as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Reina. Just one comment, and I mentioned it earlier. There's a big part of our community that really needs to be involved in the school district, so please make sure you, you keep in mind and keep them in communication. Thank you. Seeing no further comments, just my comment was, you know, there was a, there was a CNN report on heroes, and they were talking about this gentleman in India who was trying to capture rain, clean water for an area. And what they did is that they used some sort of system where you, you caught the rainfall from the roof, and as it ran down, they captured it and were able to use it. And it was a different, you know, way of using rain, but it was, it brought this, the, you know, this source of clean water to a community there that desperately needed it. They were just, you know, unable to access it. For us, we live above an aquifer, and so I don't know if we can use some good practices to be able to saturate the water or capture some of the rainwater. My, my concern always when I was on the water district was that we had so much water just going into the ocean, and we lost a lot of it. And, you know, we know we're going to be hit with not a gradual, but sometimes just pelted and saturated as we were just, you know, a couple of days ago, and a lot of that water just gets lost. And so it, to the extent that we can work with the water district to see what we can do to try to capture it as much as possible, sometimes, I know, I was, I was mentioning to the mayor, maybe we just, you know, get rid of our drains and it just soaks into the, into the groundwater. But it really is, you know, horrible to see good, clean, usable water at a moment of four-year drought going off into the ocean and getting lost. So, you know, we'll look to, we'll look to our relationships with the water district. But thank you for that presentation.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's an urgency ordinance, so we require...
Do we need, okay, do we need Councilmember Reina or the mayor?
The mayor, correct.
Can we, can we go ahead and skip this one? Yeah, and we'll come back to this one?
Yeah, you can table this one and move on.
Okay. So moving on to item 50B, the ordinance to reaffirm the ban on cultivation and delivery of marijuana.
Mayor Protem, because of previous consulting, I'm going to go ahead and, out of an abundance of cautious, and refuse myself for that item.
Thank you, Councilmember. And now we have no quorum.
Correct.
So we're going to have to wait, no matter what.
Move on to your other items, 55A and B.
But we don't have a quorum.
Oh, but he can come back for those, can't he? Yeah.
All right.
So we're going to table 50A and 50B.
Let's do that. Okay, we'll table both 50A and 50B. Councilmember, come, don't go far. Let's do 55A, the contract extension for the depository services. I'll entertain a motion unless there are questions or comments.
Mr. Mayor Protem, just comment. Fran, if you just could, please just come up here, just have a quick question in regards to the extension. And, you know, every time we, you know, and it's with JP Morgan and Chase, and I know there's new different technologies and mechanisms about banking. Could I just ask, at what point, is it six months, when then will we be going out again? Like to, to an RFP process? How is this going to work? You're asking us for an extension.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Protem, councilmembers. The reason we're asking for extension, it really is a timing issue with the departure of our IT network manager and our application manager due to retirement, and the coming on board of the new CTIO. We want it to be in alignment with our Information Services Division, obviously. It's a very complicated process when you do bank transition. So we anticipate issuing the RFP about March and selecting potentially the vendor then. If JP Morgan by chance happens to be retained, and obviously, we don't have to do massive system changes, and so it would take about three months to reinstitute them. If by chance there's another vendor that gets selected, another banking service, then it would probably take an additional six months to complete. Typically, we would like to go with banking services every five to seven years, only because it's, it is complicated to make those...
Changes.
Changes.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we put that on the record. Thank you, and I'll move the item.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, moving on to 55B.
Move the motion?
Second.
Oh.
On that one, so we put that one back as well? Okay, can we move on to 55? Is 55C some?
55C is okay.
Okay, let's go ahead and...
Motion approved.
Second. All those in favor?
I, I'm a no vote, and I just want to state my no vote for the record, and I, I would think your motion's not going to pass, so I, I think you would want to continue that since there's only three of you. The, the motion will fail.
It's, when he comes out.
Let's do that. So are you keeping track of these, these, these items that we're not... Here comes Councilmember Reina, so let's, let's go back to a few of them. Let's go back to the ones that we do need five people.
I'll refuse myself for 50.
But Councilmember...
50B.
But we did 50A already?
Yes.
Got it. Okay.
Name and last name.
So 50B, we can do as a...
No, I'm sorry, 50, 55B.
Okay, so 50, item 50B is an urgency item, so it requires five votes.
Okay, so we can't do that one, so we'll wait till the mayor comes back, and I hope he is coming back. He just mentioned to me when he left the dais that he had a family emergency with an illness, so I don't know if he's expected back.
50B, we're, the, I'm sorry, 50B is the ordinance, I'm, we did the urgency ordinance. 50B is four votes.
Okay, so let's ta, let's tackle that one. Okay, on 50B, any comments or questions?
I have comments, Mr. Mayor Protem, and just wanting our city attorney to, to reaffirm and confirm that we are not updating in any way, shape, or form Measure BB. We're just in compliance with state law, with the changes that are taking place, and the council has to take action on this item.
Yes, and if you just, just for a moment, I'll explain what we're doing here. When the city council proposed Measure BB to the voters of the city, we had to take some of the city's existing regulations because you had a ban, and we had to marry them to the new proposed regulations, and then, you know, we had the new, we had all the new law in our municipal code. Governor Brown signed a series of bills this last October, and there's a really important provision in them that says that any city that wants to ban cultivation, you know, throughout the city, or the use of these delivery mobile services, has to take action by the end of February. And so, what happened is, we went back and looked at our ordinance, and in our ordinance, it's clear that you cannot cultivate on-site for the dispensaries that we have permitted. So, our regulations say if you get a permit, you can't cultivate where you're selling. It kind of left open the question of, well, can you cultivate in a warehouse? Can you cultivate in the field? Can you cultivate somewhere else? That certainly wasn't our intent, and with the question of home delivery, while we think that there's a provision within our definitions that would prohibit that use, so what we're proposing here tonight is, out of an abundance of caution, we are not amending Measure BB itself, we are asking you to affirm what we believe was your policy, that you didn't want cultivation or mobile services, that will at least put in place and reserve your power. Staff will come back at a later date, and you can have a larger policy question if you've changed your mind on those issues, but if you don't ban now and reaffirm it, you're going to lose the ability to ban. So, we thought the best thing to do was to let you make this choice to at least put the ban in place, and then city staff can come back to you later, and you can talk about the larger policy issue.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney, and I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, moving along to 55B. Can we have Councilmember Dina Hedo come back and join us? And we'll get our fifth vote there for at least addressing...
50A?
I thought we had addressed 50A already.
Not 50A. Mayor Polito and Benavides were absent, and, yeah, we didn't have...
Got it, so we'll go back to 50A, then we'll go back to 55B. Is that the correct sequence? Boy, this is getting confusing with all these...
So, do we need a motion?
Can we do anything else in the meantime?
Okay.
Now, where did Councilman Dina Hedo go? Here he comes. All right, so we're on 50A, and I'll entertain a motion on that.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, now let's move on to 55B. That is the appropriation adjustment on the COPS hiring grant. Chief, do you mind giving us just a quick, quick background on this, very brief, but I think it's worth mentioning, a lot of the good work that you and your staff and everybody did back in Washington?
Sure, as you know, this is our second consecutive COPS grant for another 10 police officers, so this allows us to move forward in hiring the 10 officers. Through COPS, we're able to get 1.2 million, and then match a portion of the salaries moving forward, and this is going to greatly enhance our strategic plan efforts in terms of our community policing and the various programs that are now really embedded in our base budget, so it'll allow us to really expand the services and the delivery of services in terms of community policing.
Well, this is a great, I think it's a really great item, because it took a lot of effort on your part, it's a very competitive, you know, grant process, a lot of cities would love to have this, and we received it, did we receive it twice?
Twice, two years in a row.
For the maximum amount that we requested, right?
Correct.
So, I know when we were back, doing advocacy back in DC, I know that we were very well received, I think that, you know, our deliverables, the, you know, the matrix of information that we provided was really strong, so thank you for your leadership, thank you to the City Manager's Office, and I know Councilman Benavides joined me in DC to do the advocacy there, so it's a very good thing that we're doing, and it's also part of the 21st Century policing recommendations that the President has suggested, so we're in alignment with that as well. So, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, moving along now to 55C. Madam Secretary, I don't see that this is, this doesn't require a supermajority or five affirmative votes, we can go ahead and handle this. You know, the mayor isn't here, I know he wanted to comment, I believe, is that correct, Councilwoman? I know he told me he wanted to take a quick recess on everything, but I think we could probably handle everything else, I'm not sure if he wants to comment on this one, I'll assume he does, just because I did receive some, receive a question. Why don't we go ahead and table this, let's go through some of the others, and we'll give them that courtesy to come back to 55C. So, moving along to 65A, the annual review of the Council Committee and the appointments.
I would like to do a continuance for possibly two weeks, I know Councilman Benavides is not here, unless some of my colleagues have some requests, you'd like two-week continuance?
I would like a two-week continuance, I think it's fair to have him here.
For four weeks?
Yeah, that's fine.
That's fine, yeah.
No urgency on this one, so I hear that, that's a motion, Councilwoman?
Yes.
Second.
Is there a second, motion in a second, all those in favor? All those opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor Protem, can we do that for the next?
65B?
65B as well.
All right, I'll entertain a motion for a continuance of four weeks on 65B as well.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, moving along to 75B, that is the first public hearing on the...
Do you all need five votes for this item? No, so at this moment, I'm going to recuse myself, at abundance of a caution, when we first did this the first time around, I recuse myself, and I'll be recusing myself again.
Thank you, Councilwoman, this is on the approving the 2016, or consider approving the 2016 downtown bid assessment, and I'll open it up at this point for a public hearing, and do we have any members, Madam Secretary of the Public wishing to speak, or have we received any written communication?
We received one letter that was circulated to the council, and we have not received any public speaker cards.
Great, thank you, and, do we have any, we don't have a presentation on this, I understand?
No.
Very good, okay, I'll go ahead and bring it back here to the council. Do we close the hearing at this point, or do we?
We closed the hearing, and we did not received any letters of protest, so you're able to consider this item.
Got it, I'll go ahead and bring it back as a result of that, to the council, are there any questions or comments from the council on this?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve.
I'll make, I'll second that.
Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, moving along to 75B. We should call back Councilwoman Martinez, right on target. This is time for a public hearing to consider adopting the Santa Ana Climate Action Plan and associated negative deck, and I know we have Public Works ready to do a presentation on this, I'll go ahead and open the hearing on that.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, we have a brief presentation on this item.
Thanks. Good evening, Mayor Protem and Councilmembers, thank you for your time, I'm going to provide you with a very brief update on the Climate Action Plan, because it's ready to go for I won't go through all these laws and regulations, but there are a number of things that have happened since 2006 that are moving us toward developing a Climate Action Plan, and if you'll notice, the very last bullet point, adoption of the Paris Agreement, which happened only days ago, the United Nations, 195 countries have agreed to do certain things that will also impact greenhouse gas emissions. So, what does Climate Action Plan, or Climate Action mean for Santa Ana? It means a number of things. These benefits improve air quality, they reduce our traffic congestion, they improve public health, there are a number of things that we benefit from. So, where we started was, we went back to 2008, which was the year in which we had the best data available, and we developed a greenhouse gas emissions inventory for the whole community. The most important thing about this slide is that it says approximately 5.5 metric tons of CO2 equivalent per capita, that is lower than most cities already in the state of California, just some of our neighbors are at least at 7.5, LA County was, or LA City was at 13, excuse me. So, we start from a very good place. So, we set emissions reductions goals for, actually, you set the emission reduction goals for the entire community, and then internally, we set reduction goals for our city operations, because those are the things that we have a little bit more control over, and so we set those goals higher. Then, we had to develop Climate Action Plan measures, these are tasks that reduce greenhouse gas emissions, we worked with all kinds of members of the community, business organizations, the chamber, we tried to make sure that we had measures that were adoptable and supportable and implementable. This is just a brief summary of the type of measures that we have, if you'll notice, there are a number of columns, community-wide measures, and then our municipal operations measures, and then it does show what reductions we'll have by the year. We looked at sectors of transportation, land use, energy, solid waste water, and wastewater. We already knew that the state mandates would achieve very significant greenhouse gas emissions reductions, and then we have existing programs that we've put in place since 2008 through 2012. So, here we are, we have done everything that we need to do, except to come for you, to you, and ask you to support the Climate Action Plan and adopt it, then we will start implementation, if that's what you choose to do, and then we'll re-inventory and do a cap update in the future. And that's my whole story. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, first off, I would like to just thank you, and, you know, the entire Public Works staff for the great work that has been done, it's long overdue, it's four, five years in the making, from the inception of getting its consultant, and certainly it's something that I've been paying very close attention to, as you know, not just not only with AB 32, but the standards at the regional transportation plan, having to implement a sustainable community strategy at the region with Orange County and the Orange County Council of Governments that I get to represent here at the city, and what I want to state, one, that you have done, you guys all have done a tremendous job, but two, as we move forward, this is a story that we need to share. We are doing very well, and why Orange County's succeeding, and as it pertains to sustainable community strategy, because it's an overall strategy for the entire region. It is because of the city of Santa Ana that in many respects, we are in compliance, and just looking at our numbers, and you look at Anaheim as well, but more so Santa Ana is leading the way, and how do we paint that story, and indicating to folks, not just here at the regional level here in Orange County and at the state, but at the federal level? As we talk about climate change and the President, in his remarks, when he's talking about climate change, he should be talking about a community like Santa Ana, and what we are doing, and what, and we're putting in a plan together, that many communities are barely starting to look at. We've been doing this for the past four, five years, getting ourselves prepared, and we are now starting to see the numbers, and so this is an exciting time for me, I'm ecstatic that we're finally here, and I'm going to be really excited when we start the implementation stages, because only more positive things could happen for the city of Santa Ana, and as we look at active transportation and updating our circulation element, looking at land use and transportation, but more so land use, we need to make sure that climate action is tied to land use. Many times, we don't connect water with land use, we don't connect climate change with land use, land use is key in any municipality, in any region, and those need to be tied, because at the end of the day, these are big decisions that are being made, and we need to connect the dots. And so, I'm excited that we're going to be able to do so with transportation, with water, and as we update the general plan, and we have Hassan here, and he certainly understands as we put these components together, and what does that mean for the future of Santa Ana 20-plus years from now? We're ahead of the game here, and I'm glad that this plan is done now, as we move forward with updating the general plan, because it will set the stage as we move forward with land use, and how we want to connect the dots with water and sustainability, which is very important. And finally, I wanted to make sure that we, one, paint a story, and we get out there with this, what we're doing, the approval, if today we decide to do that, but, you know, some of the progress that we've made, and then number three, how do we get going in getting grant funding at the state and federal level to make sure that we are able to implement some of our strategies? And then, finally, I'm just wanting to make sure that in our plans, as we update, as we're updating the circulation element in the general plan, as it pertains to transportation, as we do bike share, we do cartago, and other forms to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, that those are, begin to be incorporated, and that we track those as well, and that we have a timeline for that. And with that, just thank you for all your hard work, and I'm super excited as we move forward with the implementation of the plan.
Thank you.
Thank you, and before we continue with the comments, I believe the public hearing is still open, and so I just want to ask, are there any members of the audience that wish to address us on this item as part of the public hearing? Seeing no one, let me close the public hearing, and now let me bring it to council for further comment. Mayor Protem, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and it is a really, really exciting agenda item, and I think that, just given what we heard and what we know, we are much further ahead than other communities are, so I think sometimes that gets lost, because I know when we were asked to reduce our water usage, we were ahead of that game as well, so, I think that, you know, all these things that other communities are really struggling to achieve, we've already achieved them with a really densely populated city, so I don't know how we're doing it, it's just, maybe it's good practices, it's being frugal, it's being careful with the use of our, you know, really, really vital resources, but again, I think to the council member's point, what I wanted to recommend, I know that on Monday, or actually over the weekend, we were asked to provide a draft of issue items to the White House, because they're looking for communities that have really strong, compelling stories that the President may use in his State of the Union. So, when I was in Washington, they talked about how compelling Santa Ana's story was, you know, bouncing back from where we were on the bankruptcy and being as strong as we are now, and it being a very difficult time, and it paralleling where the administration was. To put something like this, in addition to those points, I think would be really strong, I think we need to talk about us adopting another platform issue of the administration's, and including how strong we've been, and having these targets, not only placing these targets on ourselves, but already, but already having hit many of those, and being successful with many of those, so I think that makes our issue items that we've sent a lot stronger, and I think, you know, the local climate action plans that cities are adopting, you know, many of them aren't, and the ones that are, I think are going to be looked upon really, really well by those folks, and, you know, if we can get a mention, a nod in the State of the Union for a lot of the good work that we're doing, that's the way we get recognized federally, that's the way we give, we give a pat on the back to a lot of our residents, you know, because it's their hard work and their, you know, their way of conserving this, these vital resources, so that's one way that I would suggest, but I'll be ready to move the item when it's...
Let me just take further comment, any comment over here?
Hi, Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Nemesqua.
First of all, thank you for bringing the presentation forward to us, and I do want to thank staff as well, because I think it was teamwork, staff has a lot to do with it, as, you know, and our residents, for being at the point where we are, leading the way, and just being efficient, not only water conservation, but now moving forward with this, I'm very happy to see this on our agenda tonight. Thank you for all your hard work.
I just have three comments or points I'd like to make. One is, I know that we've been approached, and Fred, maybe you could follow up, because I know you're a part of those discussions, by basically the California Energy Commission and Southern Gal Edison, they actually want to give us about $5 million in a recent grant cycle, we couldn't, we didn't move quickly enough, you know, to participate in that, I know the City Manager also, I know I and others have spoken to him and suggested we look for that. There's going to be other rounds, and I know, you know, Marion Long worked very hard on that, actually had the recommendations put together, so I don't know if it'll be $5 million, but, you know, if we can put some money with all the good work that we've already done to be able to implement some of the additional steps, these numbers will even be more compelling, they'll even look better in terms of, you know, having, you know, the best information technologies, the best lighting technologies, the best, you know, transportation software, and I think especially with the streetcar coming, that is going to make these numbers better, because now we're going to have a whole electrical component, which is going to be a new mode of transportation through the city, and we can do something there. Another area I think we can work on is, you know, through some of the leadership roles that we have, you know, for example, at OCTA, you know, we're already, all the buses that are in Santa Ana, and it's 35% of the buses in the county are here in Santa Ana, and that number could increase, because we're going to try to increase ridership, and the numbers are so com- numbers are so compelling here, we're probably going to cut out some routes in South County and elsewhere, but we're probably going to increase them here in Santa Ana. And I think we need to capture that, because even though it's, 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 it's OCTA that's doing it, the actual emissions, and what I would argue is that the reduced emissions are occurring here in Santa Ana. Where we have, but, but yet it's something we don't control, but, but we should, you know, embed that in our numbers. We should, let's work with OCTA, figure out who's taking the credit, and anything that's good here in Santa Ana, like the streetcar, and in this case, I'm suggesting existing natural gas vehicles that are running through the city, let us take the benefit of that. And, and, and I know I saw a picture here of a, of a, you know, plug-in hybrid. I know we're one of the first cities to have, you know, hydrogen vehicles, and guess what? Hydrogen's going to become a lot less expensive in the near future, because a lot more people are coming into it, and as that becomes less expensive, we're soon going to have fuel cells where we have the engines right now, and we're going to have electric cars that are going to run on, on a fuel cell with hydrogen, you know, and, and, and no emissions in essence, I mean, other than the source of whatever's producing the hydrogen. So I, I just want to make sure we remain at the cutting edge, because when I see the numbers, look, residential use is only about 13%, and I know we can work and should do a lot of things with our residents to reduce that, but, you know, transportation is like 48. It's the big, biggest single component, and we can do something big about transportation. We already are. We, we need to take more credit with what we're doing, and there's more stuff coming. And with our activity and our density and our, and our numbers, I think we can even do better than these. And Mayor Protem is absolutely right. We have a wonderful national story to tell. If you compare us across the nation, we're, we've been doing things for a long time when other people weren't even waking up to it, and for us, it's like, gosh, it's been almost 10 years that we've had hydrogen vehicles as part of our fleet. Granted, they're early phase, you know, we didn't have the range, it was, you know, tough learning curve, there's, you know, the school of hard knocks, but we've had them in our fleet, you know, natural gas vehicles. We've got a ton of them, fill stations, we've got those, you know, you know, pushing our vendors. I mean, I'd like to see, you know, we're talking about a big trash contract, guess what? We were one of the first cities that went big time into recycling. They said it wouldn't work, we did it, and it is, and I know that reduction's already showing. But maybe what isn't showing is we help push waste management to run all their vehicles on natural gas, and they have a fill station here locally. You know, let's make sure we capture everything. So, so with that, I'd like to, you know, say, let's keep going, and I'd entertain a motion.
So moved?
Second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So now, are we on item 88? So this is a joint session of the City Council on the Housing Authority. I would like to, now, you know, basically, I guess it's a common action, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Receiving file both from the City Council on the Housing Authority?
We do have one speaker, Mr. Larry Haynes.
Go ahead. Let's, let's have our one speaker for the Housing Authority, Larry. Actually, I see Ed as well. Is that an Ed Quigley? Says Housing Authority, and Cesar Cubarrubias. Okay, they're on three and four, so I'll speak, call them in a moment. So is Larry on now, Madam?
Four.
Four. All right, so then let's wait. Let me entertain a motion on, on this receiving file report, and then we'll go on to the next items.
So moved.
Second. Okay, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those bows, motion carries. So now, that was item, Madam Clerk, that was item one and two. So now, let's go on to item number three, and who wants to speak on three? Cesar Cubarrubias, I know you want to speak on three. Ed, do you want to speak, and Ed wants to speak on three. So let's go ahead. Cesar, come on up, and you speak on item three here, and then I have somebody named Smitty, and I'm not sure what he wants to speak on. Homeless, I guess. Go ahead, go ahead, Cesar.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers. Cesar Cubarrubias, Executive Director of the Kennedy Commission. We did submit a letter earlier to you, it should be, as part of the record. Just wanted to comment on this issue, proposal for 57 vouchers, project-based vouchers to be now put into a property that recently resyndicated three years ago with bonds and tax credits, and has a new affordability of 55 years. The questions that we have is why are we putting project-based vouchers when the project already has affordability? We understand that there is a swap, maybe not a, a net loss or gain in, in terms of the budget, but at the same time, it seems like that particular scenario should have been thought about when the project was actually being resyndicated three years ago. At this point, the property has the affordability covenants, it has portable vouchers in place right now for, I believe, 51 of those 57 project-based vouchers that need to be swapped out or want to be swapped out, and the, the population that's being served there is seniors, so that senior population's not really mobile. So I, I don't believe there's a big concern that those particular vouchers that are individual vouchers would be moving. The other problem may be that there isn't enough new housing that would be available to put those vouchers into. I think the city is struggling with having new opportunities for housing where these vouchers could be placed. So we would recommend that instead of putting these project-based vouchers there, we look for new opportunities to create new affordable housing, instead of putting it in existing projects that already have affordability covenants. Thank you.
Thank you. Smitty, would you like to speak? And also Helen Cameron, I believe it is? No, Helen wants to speak on item four. Smitty, go ahead.
Good evening, Council. I'm Smitty, Service Center Roundtable. And what I wanted to speak on, basically, is just to say thank you for not just this project-based voucher program or project, but as far as these other agenda items on the previous agenda, there's positive excitement as far as our community and the rest of the city. And special thanks to your staff for actually doing something, actually working to change what's the direction of the city. I mean, it's, it's very positive now. You can actually see and feel the community coming together and thinking about how different things look. Even the city manager today looks different. But it's, it's very exciting seeing the change, the actual change of the city from what it used to be to, to the new look. I really want to thank you on behalf of the Civic Center Roundtable for your hard work. I don't see anybody doing any backflips or celebrating, because there's a long way to go, but we're thanking you for what you're doing so far. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe I have one more person. Ed, you want to speak on item three, correct?
Yes.
Okay, please go ahead.
Thank you, and good evening. My name's Ed Quigley. I work with U.S. Residential Group, and we're the property manager for the Flower Terrace Apartments.
Yeah, what she wants to say.
And I wanted to urge you to support the project-based vouchers, because what it will allow us to do is to continue to serve those residents that are the lowest income. The difference between a resident that pays, you know, $1,000 a month, and they would, they would need to earn, you know, at a minimum $20,000 a year, and, and up to 40, I believe it's just below 40, under the current limits. With a project-based voucher, what we're, who we're serving are those residents who are the lowest income, the residents who only have social security income. And putting the project-based vouchers in place will ensure that the, that the Flower Terrace Apartments can continue to do that. The current voucher system allows the residents to move on, and those units would then be strictly under the tax credit program where the rents are currently over $1,000 a month. So this is a very worthwhile opportunity. My understanding is that this opportunity is here today and is only available in the, you know, following, the first three years following the, the project initially being subsidized. So it's an important opportunity and one that I hope you'll, you'll consider. Thank you.
Any more comments? Mayor Protem?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I just had a question for staff. You know, the letter that we received from the Kennedy Commission says that this development was recently resyndicated, and affordability covenants were implemented for a 55-year term?
Yes, correct, but under that tax syndication, the, the tax credit rent for one bedroom is $1,054. So by combining the voucher with it, we're able to go down, so that's 60% of AMI. By combining the voucher, we can go down to serve 30% of AMI. And as a previous speaker mentioned, many of our seniors only have social security income as their primary income, and that's only $889 a month. So by putting a project-based voucher, we are ensuring that those units in Santa Ana maintain the affordability over the long term, because many seniors, while they may not be as mobile, they may pass away, they may move in with their families, and then that unit no longer has the affordability, the rent goes back up to $1,054.
So just so I get it, I understand this. We're further subsidizing an already subsidized population at that development?
We're moving the, it being from 60% AMI to 30% AMI.
Understood, but, but there is already an existing subsidy there for those folks, for, for that affordability level?
Correct.
Okay. And what's our objective? Is our objective to continue doing this with our, with our project-based vouchers, or is it to allow for other development to be spawned in the city?
Well, you know, recently, we've done three RFPs that have done project-based vouchers for new construction that's family-oriented, artist-oriented, you know, those things. This will allow us to ensure affordability for our senior population on a long-term basis.
And why is this?
And that the units stay in Santa Ana, because people can move around with their voucher.
Why wasn't this procured?
This, I think, was part of a, was it three years ago? So it's within the threshold of the last RFP.
Well, I guess the problem I'm having is that we have a real need for additional housing that's going to be affordable, and I know these vouchers allow for developments to be layered and used in the, in the financing. So I guess, you know, I get the idea. I'm always been, I've always been a big proponent in making sure that we try to create a real strong subsidy so we can address the needs of those very, very low-income. But, look, it just seems like we're now, we're, again, we're layering another, putting another layer of subsidy over one that already exists, and I think right now, we don't have that luxury. What we're trying to do is we're trying to find other opportunities, and I think that's what we've all been trying to talk about. So I'm, I have some real concern with this. I think at the very least, I'd like to table it just so we can consider it further, but I'll go ahead and move to, to put this over, because I know that my, I know that Council Member Ben Avívez isn't here, I know he showed some concern to me and shared some concern with me about this, so I'd make a motion to consider.
So it's a motion for 30 days, or 30 days or longer than 30 days?
30 days is fine.
All right. So a motion is second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those bows, motion carries unanimously. Now I want to go to item four, and for that, I, was that the one you wanted to speak on? I believe Helen Cameron wanted to speak on that item, and Larry, did you want to speak on that, Larry Haynes? Come on down. Let's see who gets to the mic. Helen, you're closer, and then, and then Larry will follow you. Make it a race, why not? It's a new form of, of fitness. Please go ahead.
Larry and I are used to teaming up on, on these issues. My name's Helen Cameron. I'm the Director of Supportive Housing for Jamboree. And many of you know Jamboree's work as a nonprofit developer of affordable housing. You may not know that we are the biggest developer of permanent supportive housing in Orange County, and I'm here tonight to really express my support and enthusiasm for the concept of setting aside 100 project-based vouchers. The developments that we have for homeless individuals in Orange County have relied on project-based vouchers. We are not able to develop this kind of housing for people who are coming from homelessness, and in our case, with serious and persistent mental illness, without project-based vouchers. We're working in Anaheim, we've done the first community for chronically homeless individuals in Anaheim using project-based vouchers. We have another community in Midway City that relied on project-based vouchers, and we're very excited. Larry and I were both part of the group that wrote Orange County's 10-year plan on ending homelessness, and we really see the significant advantage of having project-based vouchers in Santa Ana, so that you can truly participate in solving the problems of the homeless at the Civic Center. Without this kind of resource, as a developer of these kind of communities, we cannot do this. We need those kind of vouchers and subsidies to make this housing a reality. We have very successful models, but we rely on cities and housing authorities in the county to provide this resource, and I enthusiastically endorse your actions tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, and with that, Larry.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to echo the words that Helen spoke. I'd like to offer my enthusiastic support for staff's recommendation. Three very, three very brief points. Number one, when it comes to addressing homelessness, when it comes to ending homelessness, the number one issue that we have is creating new housing units, bar none. With a vacancy rate of less than 2% countywide, this is the most important thing we can do in effectively addressing homelessness. And to really touch on Mayor, the Mayor Protem's earlier concerns, this proposal will in fact be the stimulative thing that's necessary to create new beds, not simply preserving what's already there, but the new creation of beds. Secondly, the type of housing stock and services that will go with this will actually house and serve the most vulnerable people that are out on the streets. What will happen is these folks will be assessed, will take their acuity rate, and those that rate the highest, that is, those that are in the most need, the most vulnerable, are the ones that will end up getting placed into this housing. So I cannot stress the importance of this enough. Without this type of housing, there really is no realistic, hopeful answer for these folks that are living on the streets. This is exactly what's needed. Everything else is a halfway measure. This is the thing that we need. And finally, if I may conclude, I'd like to echo the comments that were made by the Civic Center Roundtable, inasmuch as I'd like to really sing the praises of your staff. You may not know this, but when it comes to housing and homeless issues, you have a group of staff members that are really providing transformational leadership around the county. You have some brilliant staff members that are coming up with incredibly exciting and resourceful ways to address homelessness, and as a city, you should be very proud. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Anybody else on that item? If not, I'll entertain a motion on item number four.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the item with comment.
Go ahead.
First off, I'd like to thank Callie and her staff. You know, I think that she's heard us for the several months that she's been here, that this is a priority of ours. What we're doing here is really, I think, the county in general has done a horrific job at really doing a job that is needed, and that is to solve the problem of homelessness. And here in Santa Ana, we're trying to take strides, even though we really always have to, in many respects, deal with the homeless issue for the entire county is always here in Santa Ana, and we don't always have the resources, but you have this mayor and council and staff that is sensitive and is willing to address this issue, not just short-term, but long-term, for sustainability purposes. It is needed here in the county, we need to show leadership, and so I think this is one step moving us forward. I would hope that our staff would be able to put something together on all the things that we are doing to address this strategy of homelessness and what next steps are needed. I was talking to Councilman DiNajero about, you know, Al Nino, and when we hit, we do hit the stages. to Councilwoman De Noguero about, you know, Al Niño, and when we hit, we do hit the stages, you know. I think we need to take it a step further. So when I look at $250,000, that is low, to me, is low because I think it is the responsibility of this mayor and council in this city to provide housing for those that are near the flood control, that are going to be in danger. Their lives are going to be at risk, and we should be providing how, services, whether it be shelters that are available, but hotel and vouchers for those to stay during this time as it fast approaches us. And we need a strategy for that, and what is that going to cost, and how do we partner up with hotels in the surrounding area to help the homeless? And so I'm going to encourage my colleagues as we move forward with the strategy of Al Niño, how do we address the homeless issue, and how do we provide them housing? And so I know this has nothing, we're talking about housing, but I just want us to be cognizant that as this approaches, we have a lot of homeless people within the flood control, and we're going to need to assure that they are safe, and the appropriate thing for us to do is to house them for that short period of time. And with that, Mayor, I so wholeheartedly move this-
Do we have a second?
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Item number five, I would entertain a motion.
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion carries. Item number six, do we need an action on that, Madam Clerk? No, we're good with that? Okay, let me go out and back to item 55C. I understand that was skipped by the Mayor Protem earlier.
Make a motion to approve.
Is there any other comment? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I'm opposed.
To what, which item?
Item 55C.
Oh, you went back to 55C. I have comment, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm a no vote, and it has nothing to do with the executive managers. I think I, I think you all know I have tremendous amount of respect for the work that you all do and the hard work that you do. But when we talk about equity, I believe this is inequitable. When our city manager came to us, he asked us to do, that he wanted to do pay-for-performance. I was very supportive of that for our executive managers, and he has since been implementing pay-for-performance. Many of you have received, you know, you have the opportunity to receive between 2.5% to 7.5%, and many of you have received 5%. Now, we're asking to give a cost of living of 2.5% because we gave the other employees that, and I think that's not equitable. There is no pay-for-performance for the rest of the bargaining units, an exception for the Police Management Association. And I just think that this is not fair, and most importantly, I did not see the cost figures as it pertains to retirement. So this cost of living, there is an associated cost with this, with retirement, and I cannot support that because we do not have that in our, in our base budget. We did not think about that. I understand for the next two years, that is covered, but what about for retirement and health benefits? That's not something that was included, and I just wanted to share that with my colleagues up here, that it's not wise to continue to run in this path when it is not equitable and the impacts it is going to have towards person in retirement. So with that being said, Mr. Mayor, I'm a no vote.
Any other comment?
Sure.
Go ahead.
As we mentioned, we brought in a new city manager, and he, through his leadership, our city is very different today. I've been on the council for over three years, and the things that he's been able to accomplish through his leadership is absolutely phenomenal. And the team that he's been able to put together has brought in through different grants, and you've heard it today, millions of dollars to our community. You heard our community coming today. And thank our staff for the outreach that they're doing and the great work that they're doing as a whole. I truly believe that this is taking our city in a better direction, and I'm wholehearted to be able to support this. Thank you.
Any additional comment? Okay, with that, let me just add that I, as well, will be a no vote. I think Councilman Martinez articulated well the fact that, you know, there are, there is still some information associated with, especially on the long-term liability, and I know that's going to be coming back to us because, you know, there's going to be new methods that we're going to utilize to report. And so, you know, this is really not a new thing. I mean, we've done this for some time, so with that enough said, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
And no.
Mayor, can we consider the excuse of Councilmember Benavides from this meeting?
Entertain the motion to excuse Councilmember Benavides.
Is there, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It's almost unanimous. No, I'm kidding, it's unanimous. So with that, I think we're almost finished. What else do we have, Madam?
We have public comment.
And that's about it. All right, so we have public comment speakers. Rick Reinhardt, I believe, from SCAA, if you could please come forward. And after that, Bruce Vayner, I believe, from the Honeybee Hub. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protem, and Councilmembers. Thanks for having me. I'm a relatively new member of your community here. We moved our business to Downtown Core in September 2014. We're a nonprofit organization that works in coffee, and we've got 35 staffers, 22 of them who live and work here locally. And we're thrilled to be part of this Santa Ana community. You guys have done great things with the Downtown Core, and we continue to see really positive signs of how the community's going, and I want to thank you for that and recognize the extraordinary work that the council and staff and city employees have done. We have one very small item, and I hate to air a complaint, but it's very easy to solve, so I thought I'd get it out in front of you. When we moved here, of those 22 staffers who work in our office, 17 of them are women, and we have a parking structure that's about three blocks away from our offices. Understand that some of the other parking structures closer to our offices are full, so we got on a wait list to try and promote particularly those young ladies who have to walk to their cars at night into parking closer to our offices, which are at Sycamore and Main. We have been unable to discern in any fashion from, in working with the city, who has our parking, if a list for promoting us into unoccupied spaces exists, how that list is maintained, where we are on that list, or in fact, if there is such a list. Although we were told early on that we would have those spaces promoted. So if someone could give me a clue how to unwind the knot that is understanding the parking policy and how we can get those young ladies into parking spaces that are closer to our offices and reduce their uncertainty and make it a little safer for them to walk at night, that would be very helpful to me, and I'd relish the opportunity to work with you on that. And once again, fantastic meeting, great to see all the good work here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just very briefly-
Please.
If Julie or Jorge, can we just please get his information and see how we can coordinate a meeting to address these, this problem? It's in my ward. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, Bruce, followed by Sonora Ortiz.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Councilmembers. My name is Bruce Bauer. I'm a member of the community, and I'm here to advocate in favor of an ordinance to legalize beekeeping in the city of Santa Ana. Presently, it's illegal, if you'd like to keep bees in the city of Santa Ana, it's illegal. And I think that's a shame. We're all aware of what's happened to the bees. Generally speaking, you've heard of bee, Beehive Collapse Disorder and the problem that the bees are having in, not only in California, but throughout the world, actually. And I think it's important for us as a community to be proactive and send a message. Many of the large municipalities, this is a trend across the nation, are allowing this. New York's allowed it, San Francisco, and recently, Los Angeles just legalized it. They voted 15 to 0 unanimously in favor of the legislation to allow this. The question I might ask repeatedly about beekeeping is whether it's safe to do this in an urban environment, and the question is, it is safe. It's, there's specific regulations and conditions you can lay down that will enable and make sure that beekeeping is safe within the city. I know within the city, we had a problem recently with two, the dogs that were killed in Morrison Park, and people are concerned because of that. Well, in our view, if you legalize beekeeping, that would actually allay that problem that occurred there. In that instance, in Morrison Park, the dogs were killed by a feral bee colony that homeowners weren't keeping, it was just there naturally, but they were Africanized bees. If you have bees and managed them, you would actually eliminate the problem with Africanized bees because you can only support so many bees in a given environment. The reason I think it's really important, too, that we have bees within the city is from an educational standpoint. We have a big problem in the city of Santa Ana with childhood obesity. And one of the biggest problems is children have no idea where their food comes from. There was Jamie Oliver, a famous food critic, asked on TV in one of his shows, one of the group of kids where food comes from, one of them said they thought chocolate milk came from a chocolate milk lake. And that, you know, that's, that's sort of indicative of a larger problem with our kids. They have no idea where the food comes from. They don't know where bees, what, where all bees have with, with food. And so I'd urge the city to pass an ordinance to allow beekeeping.
Thank you. And by the way, Bruce, we've discussed this at some points in the past. I know there's other speakers, but I'd like to, you know, work with staff and council members because we do have bees in the city. We have them right now. There's lots of people with bee hives. I think we ought to really take a step in that direction. Let's keep hearing from speakers right now, and then, then we'll bring it back.
Mayor, is it possible to direct staff to start looking into some-
Yeah, but let's do it. There's more speakers on bees.
Okay.
We'll direct them before the meeting's out, and it is. Sonora Ortiz, I believe?
Yes.
And then followed by Christina Hall. Please go ahead.
I'm Sonora Ortiz. I'm here on behalf of the downtown Santa Ana Farmers Market to also express our support for legalizing residential beekeeping here in the city. It's huge for us, like you were saying, as far as food production goes. We have produce at our market that's from local gardens and farms, and beekeeping is a huge production boost and just a part of that educational kind of scenario. And you should all have one of these sheets. We gave a stack to the clerk, so this has a bunch of our information on beekeeping, the ordinance itself, and some more just facts. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. So with that, Christina Hall, followed by Catalina Iniestra, I believe it is. Please go ahead, Christina.
Hi, my name is Christina Hall. I'm with the Orange County Food Access Coalition, and we serve as the county's food policy council. One of the things that we heard in our Santa Ana Food Justice and Urban Agriculture Work Group is that we want to look at urban agricultural regulations in the city of Santa Ana, and we are in the process of putting the finishing touches on an urban ag audit of the city's municipal policies. But one of those was on bees and having residential beekeeping. 2015 was an incredible year in Santa Ana. We have the densest amount of community and school gardens, and we have the first micro-farm in Santa Ana down at the Heritage Museum. It's called the Gospel Swamp Farm, and they were ag-certified this year, and they sell at the downtown Santa Ana Farmers Market. We know that bees are required for production. I hear that there might be some support from this hearing from you guys, so I wanted to offer our services as the food policy council, if you need any help in that research or on best practices in the urban agricultural, you know, ordinance areas, we can help with that. We'll be sending you at the beginning of the year, our audit and the recommendations that our committee has come up with that, that would cover bees and some other things. But we are here for you, and we would love to help. And we put this fact sheet together. We're going to be meeting with neighborhood councils, the neighborhood community members, and get some more people to sign our petition. But we'd love to see this in 2016. Thank you.
Thank you. You were Catalina, or Catalina is next?
I'm Christina.
Catalina, are you here? If not, then is Gabriela Bautista here? If Gabriella's gone, is Anna Castro here? Anna Maria Des- Be- How do I pronounce that?
Disipris.
Disipris. Please go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Anna Maria Disipris, and I am here also for the support of the beekeeping ordinance. I am an urban farmer and beekeeper, so I speak on behalf of that perspective. Without getting into too much fervent talk, I would like you to imagine going into a grocery store and walking through the produce section and seeing about 70% of that produce not there. Bees are responsible for 30% of the food that we eat, and that's a pretty large number. That's huge for us in terms of national food security and also local. I'm excited to see Santa Ana so on board and really focusing on leading Orange County in sustainable practices. A lot of your residents put a lot of effort into growing their own food, so that means that we do need, in the meantime, to support the bee population. I would like to add that us as supporters of legalizing beekeeping in a residential environment does not mean that we just make it a thing and we just make it legal. I want to ensure that you're aware that myself and other beekeepers and other educators are ready and willing to provide workshops and classes so that these things will be done properly, and to also consult on things that you can do to ensure that hives are being placed in safe environments, and also taking into considerations things like how far they are from a school or how large the yard is. A lot of those things should be considered. So yes, I am here for your service, and I'm really excited for this proposal.
Thank you. Thank you for caring about our city. Rick, you're back, sir. If you wait the entire meeting, you get to speak twice. Go ahead.
Wow, thank you. Happy holidays, by the way, to all of you guys. I come before you tonight as the Santa Ana Youth Soccer United representative or president. I don't like the title president, but I'm the representative for these leagues, the eight or nine of them that we have in Santa Ana. And I'm going to speak to you guys regarding the park and rec policy procedure. It was presented to the park and rec board in December 16, 2009. It's not been updated since 2009. A lot of things have happened in our city. The guidelines are not being followed, as outlined in the 59-page document that I have here. I believe it was sent to each one, the city council at that time, and it was approved by, by the city council as well. It addresses the COFU, which is a community on field usage, which was a group of people that helped present policies and procedures and kind of helped outline the program. COFU no longer exists, but it's represented, it's recommended that they contact the COFU committee on 11 of the 59 pages in here. There's, now, this COFU committee represents all those sports leagues, baseball, soccer, lacrosse, high line, whatever it may be, whether it be adult or youth. We need to update and reflect decisions made by park and rec in this manual so it makes sense and it has some teeth. And that's all I have on that. But the other thing I have is, in the park and rec policy manual, it leads you to believe, or it says that all sports leagues in the next, in the next few years should be doing a background check on their volunteers or their coaches, make sure they're age appropriately certified. In this day and age, I think it's really, really important that we do that. We do it in our program, and there are a lot of people that can't coach because of our background checks, which is a good thing for our kids in most cases. The last thing I have, and I need some help from, some direction for you guys. With all the, the things going on in the country right now, with all the different episodes, I think that all the leagues, or any business really in Santa Ana, should develop an action plan to deal with anything that may come up. We, as a soccer organization, have these kids out on the fields. Sometimes our parents bring the kids to the field and run errands and are gone, but we have to still figure out where these kids are. And so maybe with the police department's help, they can help us develop an action plan that we can utilize maybe throughout all the youth leagues, maybe the adult leagues, because we're ultimately responsible for those kids once they're on the field. And with, in light of what's happened the last couple of weeks, I think this is very important. I invite all the city council and the folks in the city to come out to the Centennial Park on January 9th and 10th, and the 16th and 17th. We're having our All-Star competition. We have three teams from Santa Ana already representing our city in the Section 11, which is from the LA County to the Mexican border championships, and we have more teams playing in the next couple of weeks. And if you have a red light, thank you for your time.
Thank you for that. And now, Eya- And now, Taglin and Robert Taglin.
Good evening, Mayor Pulida and Santa Ana City Member Council. Before I want to start to speak, I want just to ask, what is the reason that last time you mayor did not give us to speak public speaking? And today you excluded us from item 19?
Go ahead, give us your comments.
Okay. I believe that you would not cut my time because I wanted to tell you from the beginning. Another, what I want to say, first of all, my goal to save life of my son, who is daily abused in Santa Ana group home, that is common to people with disabilities. My reason of what I want to talk, I want to improve communication with police. It's very important. And I appreciate Chief Rojas that he is, I think, have a lot of understanding what is going on. And I believe that if it would be in his possibility, full possibility, my son would not be in this condition, but this is in Orange County, a lot of politics going. And I understand that good people and good police officer are limited to do correct things. I appreciate good people and good police officer. I want to say about police officer Reyes, Speakman, Deadroad, I think Deadroad, they're very positive people and helpful. But I want to speak about Kelly Pace, Kelly Pace and another officer. Maybe Robert will hear.
Gonzalez.
Very intimidating, absolutely biased. I mean, I asking that when I call, don't send them. They don't do the job. And it's a very contrast between positive police officer and this kind. And I can give you example if...
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Robert, please.
Hello, Honorable Santa Ana City Councils, Robert Taglin, brother of Nate Taglin. So, as I stated previously, my brother Nate has been confined in the 903 South Harmon group home, in which he's been daily choked and abused as far as overmedicating him without the consent of, against the advice of another medical psychiatrist and with antipsychotics, even though he has autism. So they're using the group home, which I'm sure they're making, I mean, in addition to making a good profit, they want to cover up the abuse, but it would be in the interest of, I would say, the county to make sure that he's released to the family, because if they continue abusing him, the more they... Killing him in the group home wouldn't do any good for the county. It would give him a very huge liability and a lawsuit. It would make no sense for why... They removed him from home illegally without a court order, without a search warrant, which I don't think they can go back in time and, you know, produce a search warrant, but that was in Irvine. That's not your Santa Ana police, but certainly Irvine police were involved in that, and that would be a liability for the Orange County Board of Supervisors. But from a Santa Ana police, you don't, at least you wouldn't want to have it occur in Santa Ana and have your liability. So that's why I would urge the Santa Ana police to not at least cover up the investigation of their abusing him, then make sure that they're investigating and prosecuting to the extent to make sure that the abusers, the abuse stops, but not threatening to transfer him to LA or Los Angeles or San Diego, as did Officer Gonzalez, and say that you're making it up and it never happened. And I got Nate to say, you know, intimidating Nate into say it never happened, which, I mean, he's been there for two years, so you're not going to, it's not going to disappear if you're just going to get him to say it doesn't happen. So that's why I urge your, you know, police to go out of their way to make sure that they stop the abuse and make sure that they do everything in their power to make sure he's released to the family, so at least we can move on out of this cycle of kidnapping and releasing kidnapping, releasing. Said he could be released, he was released by Judge Martinez, and then Judge Hubbard overruled it, and it's going to be appealed, but it's very easy legally to resolve. That's why the police should just do their job, and then it'll be resolved, and he'll be released and get him out of this situation. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I have no other speakers, and I just want to make comment and invite comment on the bee ordinance. Maybe our interim city manager, if you could, you know, maybe have staff review some of the ordinances in other cities, maybe circulate comments to council members, see if there's interest, and if there is, maybe at some point we bring back something for formal consideration. Is there interest in that, Councilor Meska?
I do have interest in that. And so if we can even maybe set up a meeting with Cat... What was your name?
Christina Hall.
Christina, with Christina, and start working on that. That'd be great.
I think in particular, I mean, look, today we approved a climate action plan. We know how important sustainability is and global warming and, you know, conservation of water and local farming and all. And this goes very strong in that direction, especially as the fourth densest city. And, you know, and that word dense, it kind of bugs me because it says that we're dense, but we're really not. Our population, you know, concentration is high, but we're very open, I think, aware individuals here. And so again, density maybe is the wrong word, but, but look, bees are very important everywhere, but especially in environments where we have so many people per square mile. We need to have a lot of bees per square mile as well, especially with a lot of the local gardening, some of the home gardening, some of the gardening's going on at schools and all that, it's just going to make everything healthier. And I know we already have bees. Maybe we don't have a bee ordinance, but there's a bee lady on North Flower, and she's got bees throughout, you know, Floral Park and elsewhere. I mean, I don't know exactly where, but I know she sells local honey and other things, and why not? You know, that ought not be illegal, that ought to be legal in a safe way, but, you know, we need bees more than they need us.
Mr. Mayor, I'm definitely in support. As we move forward, you know, with our local food supply, I think it's imperative that we take these steps, and as we're updating our general plan from a zoning perspective, that we also look at other ways of how do we produce our own local food supply. And I think this is with the Orange County Food Access Coalition is speaking of, and so we definitely should utilize their expertise and how we can bring in additional regulations as it pertains to, to not just only beekeeping, but as we move forward with urban gardening throughout our city and our own local food supply for sustainability purposes. I think that's the direction that we're going to need to take as we move forward with climate action, just not just that we're doing well here in Santa Ana, but across the United States and California, there's certainly problems. And it's most important, as we conserve water, that we try to address and deal with our own local food supply, and I think this is one start. And so I look forward to working with the Orange County Food Coalition and hoping when they finish their, the work that they're doing as it pertains to Santa Ana's regulations and where we can enhance or make modifications so that we're friendly to agriculture here in the city and ensuring that our residents continue to conserve and reduce their greenhouse gas emissions so they don't have to go to the grocery store. They're actually producing their food at home, and most importantly, many of them can create, you know, small business incubators to then start producing and selling, not only providing food to the homeless, but also making a business for themselves and working with the downtown merchants to provide French fruits and vegetables. As you all know, I'm very passionate about this subject and sustainability, so it's exciting that some of you are excited about beekeeping too.
Well, I know that Madam City Attorney is going to get nervous if we start talking about this more because it's not agenda. But I think you can see, we're all pro bee. I mean, who's not, who doesn't like honey? I mean, you know, come on.
We're all sweet people. All right, so with that, is there a report from our interim city manager, please?
No comments.
I love that about you. Thank you. So who wants to go first?
Michelle.
Are you cool? You're on a roll, Michelle. You're doing well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, please.
I'm actually going to be brief because I am under the weather. You probably can't tell, but not feeling well. I'm just, I'm always full of energy, great subject matter that we talked about, and just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah. I know some folks take offense when we say Merry Christmas, but that's what I believe in, and so I want to wish all those that believe in Christmas, have a Merry Christmas and a very Happy New Year. And I look forward to working with all of you as we move into 2016. We have a lot of exciting things, a lot of work ahead of us, a lot of plans, as what we approved here today, that will be implemented, and we need to make sure that we keep tracks. I look forward to working with our staff in 2016, and again, like to wish all of you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Councilor Tina Hettle, please.
I'm just trying to figure out when the little elf on the shelf came into life. I never heard of that until my daughter said, oh, look at the elf on the shelf, it moved. I said, no, it didn't. She says, yeah, it's over there now. And I asked my wife, I said, what is this for? She goes, it's to make sure that they're okay. I said, oh, back in the day, all we needed was a belt, you know? I'm just teasing. That's bad, bad, bad councilman. All right, here we go. I would like to say happy holidays to everyone. And I think this is, today we started this meeting off taking a moment to reflect on someone's life that was ended tragically. And I think that during these times, it's very tough for a lot of families. We've all lost loved ones, and we remember them during these holiday times. But I think it's very important that we reflect and enjoy each other's company and appreciate one another, because at the end of the day, it's like I tell my students, I said, you know, when you left junior high school and you went to visit, it wasn't the same anymore. And they said, yeah, it was. And I said, it's because the people that were there were no longer there. It's different. I said, we're on this planet together, and we have our own history, and this is who we are, and a few years down the road, we'll be out of here and somebody else will come in. So I'm just very grateful to be sitting up here with these folks and to be on the same team with this staff. And as we go into our holiday season and into the new year, I just want to thank you guys for all the work that you do and for putting up with us. Because sometimes I sit up here and I think, geez, how must it be to live in your shoes right now? So thank you for being patient. I know you're looking at me like you want to be respectful, but I know inside you're going, yes, some of you guys are crazy. Not me, of course. I'm the most intelligent guy up here. I'm just teasing. Anyhow, but no, and, you know, all kidding aside, I really do appreciate the work you put in. You do try to accommodate the best you possibly can, and we are the leaders of this county. If you look at everything that we do, we're always the first, and as Santa Ana goes, the rest of the county goes. And I think that's pretty, something that I'm very proud of. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protemp, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the councilwoman gave us all a Christmas gift tonight, right? Because she just was brief and to the point, and I'm going to, we're going to try to follow that lead if we can do that. So thank you, Councilwoman. You know, I, again, want to thank everybody who works so hard all year long and does work that we never recognize, and sometimes, you know, we have to step back and say thank you. And sometimes when we don't say anything, that means that, you know, we are very, you know, glad that you're working so hard, and I'm talking to staff and everybody involved. And a lot of people aren't even in this room. You know, we have a very large organization, so those folks who put in some really long hours and help us be successful, you know, happy holiday seasons greetings. I mean, those are the politically correct things to say, but, you know, Merry Christmas, Feliz Navidad to everybody. I want to, you know, make sure that everybody knows that we, blessings on everybody. We had a very, very difficult meeting, you know, this earlier today, talking about the topic of this young woman, Tenwin, who was lost. And to me, it was, it had a profound impact because I did spend some time with the family and got to know them a little bit. I think that as we come back in 2016, we know there's, you know, this is an unfinished story, because there's issues like gun control that we need to think about. I think that, you know, it wasn't the right time to speak about it in front of the family. It wasn't the right time to address it thoroughly, but it's a conversation that we have to have as a community, because it's now touched one of us. And I think that it's very difficult for us to, you know, see a young woman cut down in her prime and us sit by idly and not have a real serious conversation, at least one way or the other. And I have some friends that are very strong advocates of the Second Amendment, and we, you know, we're still friends, but we have to have that conversation because we are a vulnerable community. We have, we're a very young community, and we've lost many lives to guns and weapons. So I just think that nobody is talking about abolishing the Constitution nor any of its amendments, but at the same time, we have to be responsible stewards of how we create community standards here in our city. And so we've now been touched, you know, by something folks in Paris have, folks in large, you know, metropolitan areas, but now that we've been touched, I think it is going to be incumbent upon us to come back and revisit this. So I want to, again, end on something that, as we lose one more person, I got an email right now from a long-term resident in town who lives in the Delhi neighborhood and has lived there for many years. Doña Rosa Peña Flor just lost her daughter to cancer. And so, Madam Clerk, or Madam Assistant Clerk, do you mind if we adjourn in her memory? I don't have, I don't even have information on her name because this was sent to me by the Delhi staff. If we can adjourn in her memory at the subsequent meeting that we come back in next year, but I know that Doña Peña Flor is very active in the community, and I know has been struggling with her daughter's health. So with that, I want to wish everybody a prosperous 2016. Be safe, be happy, enjoy yourselves, love each other, and let's be a stronger community next year.
Thank you. Now let's go over to Councilor Meska, please.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank, I don't see Gerardo out here, but I do want to thank Gerardo and his team for Saturday's Plaza Navidad event. I know it took a lot of effort to put that event together, and I was there for the ribbon cutting of the new signage for Plaza, which used to be Plaza Santana, is now Plaza Calle Cuatro. So that was a nice event, and I was able to attend, and I do want to thank everyone that was involved. There you are, Gerardo, rock star. Thank you. Also, I would like to ask staff if we can keep me updated on the cleanup of the debris as we make progress on that with El Niño coming up. And I do want to thank my colleagues here on the council and staff and our executive management team for a great year that we've had together. I know your hard work, know that your hard work and efforts are appreciated, and also just want to end with wishing everybody happy holidays and best wishes for the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Raina, please.
Yes. As you heard today, we are in El Niño. It is happening. We're in the midst of it. What type of rain we're actually going to get, who knows? But believe it or not, our drought is so severe that whatever happens in El Niño is not going to get us back to where we need to be. So please continue to conserve water when it rains, a couple of days before you actually water your grass. So in the midst of all that rain, you may think that we're okay, but unfortunately, we're not. So please continue to conserve water as we move forward. I'm happy to announce that Relay for Life is at April 23rd and 24th at Santa Ana College. It's fighting cancer and bringing awareness and raising some dollars. Please check the website if you're interested in joining a team or creating your own team. Team Santa Ana, I'm the team captain. More than welcome to have everyone join us. Please come in. This is definitely an issue that transcends every line that you could think out of there. Unfortunately, cancer affects us all, so please spend some time if you're able to. Like always, the holidays are coming up, so I want to say happy holidays to everybody and have a great new year. And for those that celebrate Christmas, like I do, Merry Christmas. It's a great opportunity to shop in Santa Ana to get those last-minute gifts. There's a lot of great shops here locally, so please do so. And with that, happy holidays, Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you. And just a comment for myself as it relates to, you know, a little bit of the discussion that we had earlier, is I think on the climate action plan, really, really large things that we can do. And as 2016 rolls around, we really need to integrate the streetcar. I mean, at this point, we're already looking at, you know, where the yards are going to be, how many cars we're going to have, so let's take advantage of it. It's a huge, huge project, and I think we need to be proactive. It's going to be here before you know it, and we need to be planning, you know, should the bike lanes be on the same lanes as where the streetcar is, or should they be a little bit away but parallel? Because I know in certain cases, the tires get into the tracks and cause accidents, so time for the community, time for awareness, time for us to be, you know... so time for the community, time for awareness, time for us to be, you know, very, very proactive as that comes around. And then finally, I do want to adjourn today in memory of Tinwin, you know, just such a beautiful lady, and I agree with Mayor Protem that we are gonna have to, I believe, next year, just see whatever it is that we can do as a city, you know, to, you know, to make it a safe city. Our crime is way down, but it doesn't mean it can't be lower, and it doesn't mean we can't be more proactive than we've been on some of those issues. So with that, I do want to say, for those that celebrate Christmas, I don't apologize for saying Merry Christmas. I think it's a good thing to say. I'll say happy holidays for others, but, you know, for me, it just, you know, Christmas has a special meaning, and I think those of us that celebrate it should rejoice and be very happy in that. So with that, let's have a Happy New Year, and we'll see all you in January.